All right. Forgive me for not knowing the exact protocols, but do I simply call the meeting to order?
Yes, yep.
Do I need to announce the time?
Yeah, just the date and time would be great.
All right. Would now like to call to order the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee on Wednesday, January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four. It is six thirty three P M pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty three. An act of relative to the extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law on March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. And I assume then, do we have an audience sharing, Greg?
Uh, yes, so anyone in the audience raise their hand to share and I can make sure that they can speak. I, Matt, I do not see any hands up at this time.
So then with no requested audience participation or sharing, we then move to item B of the agenda, which is in action on the minutes. I would like to request, is this to receive approval for the the open meeting minutes of December twentieth?
Correct. Yep. That is accurate.
I'll move in. We accept the open meeting minutes of December twentieth, two thousand twenty three.
Second.
Yeah, I see a move by Paul, seconded by Chris Cavino. All in favor, and just remind me, Greg, protocol, do we all need to raise our hands?
Roll call votes. We'll just need a verbal, a verbal response from each committee member.
Okay, all right.
Matt, can I interrupt for one sec? Greg, there is a Kathleen with no last name in the panel. Do you want me to promote to the panel? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll hope it's our our chair.
I'm gonna promote.
My finger on the the.
The eject button.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, I think.
This is suspenseful. Oh, there we go.
Take your hand off the eject button.
So I let me allow me to Kathleen, allow me to finish Agenda Item B, and then I will turn it back over to you gladly. So what I will do for a roll call vote, I'll look across my screen and call upon the committee members to either to provide their approval or alternative vote for the meeting minutes of December twentieth. Catherine, excuse me, Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
John Wasaki.
Yes.
Joan Frank.
Yes.
Chris Cavino.
Yes.
And Kathleen Pletchko.
Yes.
All right, that is confirmed and unanimous. Oh, and I've also met Spencer vote yes. Kathleen, would you like to take over from here?
Uh, sure, unless you want to keep going. I'm fine with that, too.
Pass it back.
All right. Okay, so you did action on the minute. So educational policy, we have a bunch of approvals for overnight field trips.
Yeah, so I'll ask Principal Levin just to provide an overview of each field trip and and then request the committee's approval.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. And I will preface this by saying, yes, we have three overnight field trip requests. I've put out an email out to my staff to just make sure we don't have, you know, a lot more coming down the pike where we've now made the turn from first semester to second semester. So I'd really like to have a good idea. We have any more coming. I don't. I haven't gotten any responses to that. So it is highly likely that these are the last overnight field trip requests that are going to come in for the rest of this year. And so here we go. So the first one is a trip for DECA to attend a conference in Boston, the Massachusetts Career Development Conference in Boston. We've done this every year. I think we have roughly ninety students, eighty, ninety students attending this one. And that's always very exciting and well attended, and we usually bring home a lot of hardware. So that one is March seventh through ninth, two thousand twenty four. Uh, the next one, I don't know if you want to vote each one as we go, Greg, or if you prefer, I'll just discuss each, take questions, and then just do all them at the end. All right. So first robotics, our robotics team has an overnight field trip request form in for a competition in Maine, as I understand it, in order to to participate in or qualify for the New England Regional Competition, you need to participate in two smaller competitions, and you don't always get to participate in the two nearest to you. So as I understand it, we are able to attend and participate in at one of the competitions in W P I, which is, of course, right in our backyard, but the lottery system resulted in our getting our second event is in Maine, and so that's roughly three hour drive is what they say, and that's why an overnight trip would be required in an effort to allow our kids to participate in that and then go on to New England, the New England Championship round. That has my full endorsement, as does the DECA trip. And then the Harbinger, our school newspaper, of course, they have put in a field trip request to attend the Columbia Scholastic Press Association Annual Spring Convention in New York City. That's March thirteenth through fifteenth. That is on the campus of Columbia University, where students would meet all kinds of other student journalists, and this is the best student journalism organization in the country and the best conference in the country. And so that's very exciting and worth noting. Our newspaper, both the digital and print edition, were named last week between when I put in the packet and today were named a crown finalist, which means that they will either receive a silver or a gold recognition by the Columbia Scholastic Press Association, which would not be our first, but we are we are among the elite company of of school newspapers in the country, and this would be an opportunity to to receive that designation in person. So the worst case scenario is they're they're receiving a silver medal for their hard work. So many, and I think Cass has worked for the the Harbinger and published many pieces for the Harbinger. So this would be an opportunity for us to celebrate one of her accomplishments. So so those are our three overnight field trip requests. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I mean, I think it's worth noting that these are field trips that Algonquin students are lucky enough to attend every single year. And to my knowledge and my memory, we've never ever had an issue with any of these field trips. So our students are always well behaved, and they usually bring home all sorts of awards and accolades, and we're just incredibly honored to have them, all the all three of these groups, go to these go to these field trips again.
Sean, can you, Sean, can you remind me, who is the teacher oversight person for Harbinger?
Uh, so we, the main advisor is Lindsay Copens. She's an English teacher, and the photojournalism side of the paper is over is overseen by Michelle Shepherd. She's a photo teacher in the building. So both them are high school teachers for us.
And have we had the harbinger in to talk to us?
Uh, to present to the school committee? No.
I mean, it's just pretty impressive. So I mean, clearly, it has to be, I'm sure, no offense to Cass, but I mean, they have to be getting a lot of good guidance here. So they could be really interesting to hear from them at some point. I don't know. So well, well done. I've heard a lot about that guy. I've heard a lot about the robotics. I really don't think I've heard too much about the harbinger other than the fact that they're going to get a gold or a silver. Trust me, Cass, it'll be a gold, but that'd be great. Thanks.
I would be happy to share that along. I think, you know, we could have, I think, they're a group of students and adults who work very hard, very quietly, and often very thanklessly. So I think they'd be appreciative to get a little bit of attention and appreciation from the the committee. I'm sure they would not say no to that.
I I do know that every time we or every time they publish, when we at least used to have the physical packets, we would always get the harbinger in our in our packet.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. I'm not saying I I read it. I'm just saying I'd like to hear from them. I mean, we just, I've never really heard from that. I think it'd be great if if we could fit it in at some point over the next few months. I mean, it's fine. If not, that's fine, too.
No, Greg, if you want to, I can take that conversation to Ms. Copens, Ms. Shepherd, and maybe it's for a meeting after the Columbia, you know, trip. I'm well aware that you that these trips get approved, and you don't often always hear or see what the results of the trip or the photos, those kind of things. So it might be gratifying for you all to see what the results of this kind of approval process looks like and how much enjoyment the kids get out of it and how how well they they represent our school while they're in New York or in Boston or in Maine. So I'm happy to arrange that if you like. So Greg and I can speak about that.
Yeah, so I'll work with Sean and Kathleen to find an upcoming agenda to add it to John.
Okay, great. Joan?
Um, I don't have a question. I just would like to make the motion if possible.
Are there any other questions? Then go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make the motion to approve the following three field trips. The first one is DECA's overnight field trip to the DECA Massachusetts Career Development Conference in Boston, Massachusetts, March seventh through ninth, two thousand twenty four. The second one is approval of the first robotics team overnight field trip to the Pine Tree District Event in Lewiston, Maine, March fifteenth through seventeenth, two thousand twenty four. And the third one is the approval of the Harbingers overnight field trip to the Columbia Scholastic Press Association Annual Spring Convention in New York City, New York, March thirteenth through fifteenth, two thousand twenty four.
Right. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Paul? Okay, move by Joan, seconded by Paul. Any further discussion? All right, I'm going to do the same thing with the roll call vote. I'm just going to call you out as you appear on my screen. So that's Joan.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And that's all I have. Since I joined late, am I missing anybody? All right, then that is that approved, that those three are approved unanimously. Okay, on to our next agenda item is the Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity Introduction.
Sure. So this evening, I'm pleased to formally introduce Selvi Oyola as the multilingual, Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity. You know, Selvi, and secondly, I first want to thank, secondly, I want to thank John Wasaki for participating on on the interview process and Dr. Reinhorn for leading it. It was a pretty comprehensive process and yielded a great result. So Selvi is currently an ELD teacher at Algonquin. She has worked in various capacities across the Northborough, Southborough, and public schools. She brings to her work design, thinking, and engineering background, project management. So she is an engineer. She, in her prior career, and has centered her work in the past five to ten years on education. And I think we're very excited to have her join us and begin the work. Currently, we are in the process of trying to find a person to be the next ELD educator at Algonquin. That has been a slower process because we want to make sure we find the right person. And when we hire the ELD educator at Algonquin, Selvi will will begin in her official capacity. So welcome, Selvi. If you want to have a few opening remarks.
Good evening. Thank you so much. It's definitely my pleasure and privilege to be serving in this capacity next in my educational career. Rhoda and I have been working closely for the past couple of years, and I do know that I have huge shoes to fill. I'm up for the challenge, and I'm excited to be working closely with everyone in this wonderful school district that we have.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome, Selvi.
Thank you, Kathleen.
I can guarantee very few things, but I can guarantee that there'll be many more presentations for Selvi in her future.
Thank you. Um, okay, well, if anybody doesn't have any questions for Selvi, then we will move on to, and Selvi, that's a good thing. You'll have plenty of questions later.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to the Guidance Department presentation.
So Greg, I think you're muted, but Lisa Connery is in the in the, among the attendees, and some of her staff are as well. And I'll let Lisa respond about which some of them might have speaking parts among the slides.
I promoted Lisa. Stephanie, do you know who to promote?
Uh, no, I promoted Lisa, but I need Lisa to tell me who else.
Pam Mackey and Linda Hutchins, please.
Sure.
And then Lisa as well will need screen sharing permission. She has the slide deck that she can control. That's okay. Oh, there you go.
You should be all set.
All right, so I think we're all set. So good evening. I don't know if Pam and Linda have joined us yet, but I hope everybody enjoyed the holidays. It's nice to be here tonight to share with you some of the work we do in the Guidance Office. I have Linda Hutchins and Pam Mackey joining me. The other counselors were disappointed. The meeting was rescheduled as they were really looking forward to joining us last week. It's been a busy start to the year in guidance while transitioning students into the new school year and helping over sixty percent of our seniors submit early applications. We also had two of our counselors decide to move on to other positions. So first semester has certainly been a whirlwind for us. And I would like to just take a moment to publicly thank Andrea Hodgkin, Pam Mackey, and Linda Hutchins for the exceptional work that they've done, helping to provide coverage and support for our students while we worked through the transition. I truly appreciate their efforts and thank them for all they've done in supporting our students. We're now ready to embrace the second semester fully staffed, welcoming two new counselors to our team, Cindy Nelson and Denise Brianzi, as well as welcoming Kate Mulcady back from maternity leave. So to say that we're excited heading into second semester is an understatement. So tonight, we're going to be focusing on the many facets of guidance. We're going to be highlighting the depth and breadth of the work of a school counselor. For many parents, when they think of a school counselor, they quickly connect to post-secondary planning. And yes, that's a large part of the work that we do, but there's just so much more that we do, whether it's helping students transition into the school, tracking academic and graduation progress, working on career exploration with our students, doing course planning and scheduling, coordinating standardized testing for the admissions process. You know, we develop and oversee all of our five oh fours, not to mention just the extensive collaboration that we do with our parents, administrators, and teachers to support the needs of our students. And we also do provide a lot of social emotional support throughout the school year. So the work is varied with a wide range of needs. I can honestly say that there's never a dull moment in the office. I think it equate to anybody who has an adolescent, or you go to knock on their door and open up the door, and you're kind of like, what's waiting for me on the other side? I'm not sure, right? So every time we go to open up our door, we're kind of like, what's waiting outside for us? Because the needs of our stare, our students vary, and we're constantly having to adjust and adapt to whatever's waiting on the other side of the door for us. So in the essence of time tonight, we're going to share with you the work we're currently doing as part of our guidance curriculum with social emotional learning and career exploration and how we go about providing supports to students and families. So I don't know what just happened here with the PowerPoint. I apologize. Let me read, let me like click back over here. I'm going to turn it over really quick to Linda Hutchins. She's going to start. She's going to begin by talking about our social emotional work that we're currently doing with our freshmen.
Okay, so I'll start while you fix the screen if possible. So good. Good evening. I'm Linda Hutchins. Thank you for having us here tonight. Tonight, I will be briefly talking with you about this year, what's new with our S C L student learning, student emotional learning workshops. Each year, we reevaluate the guidance proactive curriculum. It's designed for all students, and we try to make sure that it's also student-centered and student-driven. We are continually refining our series of workshops, and for the freshmen, the focus is on the S C L life skills. We provide the workshops to the freshmen in the fall as part of the transitional support to the high school. Each lesson is developed to help them reflect on the soft skills and life skills that can help them be successful in high school and life. This year, we have added a small group lesson at the very beginning of the year in September to introduce all the freshmen to the Guidance Department, our space, the procedures, and to make introductions to their counselors. We also incorporated the bullying presentation that we do every year into this small group lesson. We talked about bullying, the students' rights, the resources available to help them and all students if they have to deal with a bullying situation. The message that all students can come to school and feel safe, the supports available to them was highlighted in this lesson. Then we conducted the classroom lessons on growth mindset, grit, and smart goals. We try to help all freshmen take a bigger look at what they can control, change, and improve upon. This year, we tried to personalize and individualize the lessons so that students could reflect on their own experiences and choose for themselves what goals they would like to focus on. A quick overview of each topic includes growth mindset. Our ability to learn is not fixed and can change with effort. Grit, passion and perseverance for long-term goals. It is not based on their IQ, and it is not based on their talent. We discussed how having a growth mindset can help develop grit while also discussing how to fail forward. We gave each student a quick homework assignment to interview someone in their life who had a time when they would view as a failing moment and what they did in that situation. Then in the next session, we had every student read their answers. And this was extremely powerful and very successful. The goal was to normalize that we all experience failing moments, and it is what you do at that time. Changes you can make to improve that matter. We discussed how you learn both from your mistakes and from your successes. We discussed how grit is one of the most sought-after soft skills employers look for in an applicant. Then we discussed smart goals. A new habit can be developed within twenty one days. We discussed what students had control over and how a well-thought-out plan can lead to change, improvement, and areas of their life. At this point, we used our online career exploration website, Pathful Explorer, to develop an individualized lesson for each student to explore the goals relevant to their lives using the parameters defined in the SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, while also looking at the barriers. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Lisa Connery so she can talk more about Pathful Explorer.
So that's some of the work that we do with our freshmen. As students transition into sophomore year, we start to, we focus on career exploration and starting to develop some of those workplace readiness skills that students are going to need. So last year, we began um, that students are going to need. So last year, we began utilizing, um, the program Pathful Explore for um, career exploration with ours, with our sophomores. The program offers a wealth of information related to career and workplace readiness. There are three different career assessments and over three thousand career-related videos. The career information in Pathful Explore is connected to ONET, which is sponsored by the Department of Labor. So it connects students to career profiles using the latest labor market data. So through Pathful Explore, we can create individual flex lessons for students that allow them to explore their career interests. So in the seminars, we have students complete the three assessments, the career clusters, the interest profiler and the work importance profiler. All three assessments take a slightly different approach to identifying student strengths, interests and preferences, helping them to connect students to potential careers that they may find rewarding. So every sophomore creates these assessments and once the assessments have been completed, we have students identify potential careers to investigate and guide them through how to access information related to their chosen career. Whether that's maybe skills or wages, knowledge, education they might need in order to be able to pursue that career. So basically, we have them do that three different times. So after each assessment, we have them select um, a career of interest and then they do a deep dive in that career. Pathful Explore has a lot of videos that are related to that career. So they're able to kind of get an introduction from various professionals in the field around, um, what the career is all about and the work that they do. So it's a nice foundational introduction for students. So we kind of guide them through the platform, model for them how they can investigate, um, a career. And then they are able to access the program from home. So they can continue to do that exploration independently. So in addition to offering the lessons on developing on, um, the career exploration, we also do lessons on developing a resume and interview skills. Every time we have a student presentation, we offer a parent presentation. So we introduce the parents to Pathful Explore as well, guide them through the platform um, and encourage them to sit with their, with their child and review their assessments and talk with them about the careers that they've been exploring as well as maybe next steps they could be taking. Whether it is, you know, having them talk to a neighbor who might be, um, you know, in that career field that the student has investigated. So we're doing a lot of foundational work to help students begin to think about possible careers. And as a department, we are really excited to be working with Michelle Kalin, the new career and innovations, um, coordinator. We're looking forward to expanding the career opportunities we have to offer students through informational interviews, career days, internships and job placements. It's, it's a really exciting time and an opportunity. So we're so glad to have that position in place because that's going to build on, um, the work that that we're doing. I'm not sure why this keeps popping up here. I'm not touching my screen.
Yeah, I'm not either, uh, Lisa, but, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not even touching my like keyboard. Why it keeps cheating. Yeah, my apologies for that. But anyways, um, so i- in addition in Pathful Explore, you know, there's a lot of different, um, additional videos for employability skills. So we are really looking forward to, you know, further expanding the work that we're doing um, with our students, um, you know, with the work that Michelle's bringing to the high school. So it's a great opportunity. Um, I'm going to hand it over to Pam Mackey, who's going to talk just a little bit about, you know, some of the social emotional supports that we provide for students.
All right. Thanks, Lisa. Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. Um, I'm going to speak a little bit about, uh, one of my favorite parts of this job, which is the social emotional counseling that we do with the students. As we all know, adolescence can be a really challenging time in life as students try to figure out who they are, their passions, how they fit in in life after high school. Figuring all of this out at times can feel very daunting. As counselors, we help students navigate these challenges. Working closely with students who are at risk is a top priority so that they can fully access school. Students can be at risk for various reasons, whether it's academic progress, mental health, substance abuse, and as well as the personal and family issues that may come up along the way. Counselors work with each student individually to assure they are on track with graduation. We support students in maintaining balance in their schedules, identifying students needing additional support through tutoring and academic study, and we also do referrals for five oh fours. We oversee and manage the five oh four process, revisiting these plans yearly. We monitor students attendance, track at-risk students' progress through Canvas, and we collaborate with teachers. When we have students struggling with school avoidance, we work collaboratively with parents, administrators and teachers to develop a return to school plan. Year after year, we're seeing more students struggling with mental health. The demand for personally, personal counseling in our jobs has steadily increased. I can probably speak for most of my colleagues when I say we embrace these students in this part of our job. Uh, we act as a friendly ear, as their advocate and as their champion. For some students, the work they do with their counselor is sufficient while others may need additional support. When this happens, we guide the student and their parents toward appropriate resources such as Metro West Behavioral Health Referral Program or the Interface Referral Service. These programs are free mental health services where families are matched with licensed mental health providers within two weeks of their call. The referral service can be a tremendous help to families trying to navigate mental health supports. We also collaborate with local agencies such as Southborough Youth and Families and Family Success Partnership to ensure all students are supported. Once students are matched with an outside provider, the school counselor is available to consult with them and help identify strategies to support the student in school. There are times when concerns related to student safety are brought to the counselor. When this occurs, a risk assessment is completed to determine the need for more immediately mental, immediate mental health supports. At any point, there are concerns, parents and guardians are fully engaged in the process and guide in in what next steps may be helpful for their student. This year, the signs of suicide program was implemented through the health and fitness classes. As counselors, we provided follow-ups to any students that were identified as needing additional support. We're very fortunate to work with families that are comfortable reaching out to us with concern for their children. When a family alerts us or we identify students in the building who are struggling with substance abuse issues, we are ready to provide them with the support they need. The Mass Substance Abuse Hotline offers youth and young adult treatment programs. This spring, the counselors will be trained in the I Decide Program, which is a tier-two intervention for substance prevention. Counselors will be working with students to provide counseling and education around substance use through individual or group sessions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Pam. So, as you can see, we, we wear many hats in our work with families. Our days are often filled with a lot of diverse needs. One minute, we might be answering questions about a co- college application. The next, we're working with a student who might be, um, experiencing significant anxiety. And then we might have another student who's comes in, who's, you know, struggling academically. So the work really does require us to be flexible, adapting to the needs, um, of the students in front of us. Um, as I mentioned before, we're never quite sure what's waiting on the other side of the door for us. Um, but we do that with enthusiasm and positivity and work really hard in supporting our students and meeting their needs, whatever those may be. So that's just kind of like a, just a quick summary of a few different areas, um, that we focus on, again, kind of highlighting the work of a school counselor because I think oftentimes many people who maybe their student is a traditional student, um, don't realize, you know, um, all of the other things that we do in our work with our students. So we just wanted to give you a little snapshot of, um, the different things that we work on and we are more than happy to take questions. Um, not sure, not. I don't know if there are any questions.
It looks like, uh, Karen has a, a question. Has your hand in the air?
Yep, I see Karen.
Hi, thank you so much. That was great. Um, I just have two questions. Do you all do, uh, coordinate, coordinate your own, uh, students' five oh fours? Or is there a specific coordinator who does them all? How does that work?
No, we all do our own student, um, five oh fours. So we coordinate them individually.
Okay. And, um, when do you do these workshops for the kids?
Um, so throughout the year. So we do, we typically in the first semester, we focus on the transition of our freshmen into the high school. Um, and we focus on our seniors. So, uh, we do ninth and twelfth grade in the first semester. And then we turn our attention second semester to tenth and eleventh grade. So we're just started doing, um, post-secondary planning with our juniors. So we're, we've been in the classroom doing those workshops, workshops right now. We'll be wrapping that up and then we'll be doing individual appointments with our juniors. And then in a couple of weeks, we're heading in to do, um, we're going to do five different workshops with our sophomores around career exploration. And in between that will fit our freshmen in again to make sure that we go over course selection with them so they understand that process and planning for courses for not just this year, but for the next year or two. So we have an entire kind of process we follow.
You, you go into specific classes? That's more along the lines I meant, like specific, like English classes or?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we'll, we coordinate with the different departments and so, um, this last round, you know, we, um, pulled from the US two classes. And so all of the sophomores are in, I mean, we'll be pulling from US two classes. All the sophomores are in the US two, um, classes. And so then they come down to the workshops. And then we divide up the workshops by counselors so that the counselor who has those students is in front of the students in the workshops. And the juniors, we just pulled from the world history. So yeah, it varies, but from the core classes, um, we have students come down to the workshops so that everybody gets to engage in the workshops. And if we have somebody who's off-cycle, then we send them a pass from another class and have them join the, the presentations.
Great. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Um, Cass, did you have a student perspective on guidance that you would like to share?
I actually have a question, but, uh, from my student perspective on guidance, I think they do a great job. I personally have a five oh four plan mostly due to a medical issue with a food allergy and they do a great job of assessing that every year and the guidance counselors are really great as a whole. Um, my guidance counselor this year sought after a different job and the transition between different ones was great and I'm right on track for college and overall guidance is doing an amazing job. Um, my question is about Pathful Explorer versus the older technology that was used because I remember when I took a similar program, it, I was selected for the midwife career, which seemed a little bit inaccurate. So I was just curious, um, from your perspective, how does it seem like it's working so far? And is it any different from the previous ones and why?
Yeah, it, well, in the past, we utilized, um, the career assessment tools on Naviance. And so we did find that they were not as robust as the career assessments that are available and all of the information and the videos that are available on Pathful Explore. Um, that was, you know, the reason why we transitioned over to the, to the new platform. And now we have our ninth and tenth graders utilizing that platform because we did feel like it was more robust in giving students, you know, better kind of, um, feedback, right? Responses, um, and insight into their potential career matches. So yes, you did the Naviance one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Kath- Kathy Key.
Um, thank you, Lisa, for the presentation. Uh, my question is, like, we, my three kids had great experiences with the guidance department. But, and I, if I, and I don't remember this, if it happened, do you, does the guidance counselors go into the middle schools prior, like the um, fall or spring when they're in eighth grade? Just so they have a familiar face. So when they come to the high school and they need to seek you out before the introduction and the workshops that they know who to look for in case we're having issues?
So we do a few different things. Um, the students, the middle schools, um, the eighth graders came up and visited um, in, uh, to- late October, early November to tour the building. And so we participated in that presentation as well. We go to transition meetings with the middle schools and we participate in orientation. So the students come through our office when they're in for orientation. So we're introduced to our students at that time. And they are aware of who their counselor is. And then we, um, try to, we have our, um, freshman workshops right after our senior workshops. It makes it a little busy, but we get to see the students um, within like the first three and a half weeks of school, just to make sure that, you know, we've done, we've done an introduction. As Linda had mentioned, this year, we actually had them come down to our office. It was a little hectic getting them settled down into our offices. But we had them in our offices and we met with our students in small groups and, you know, so they really could kind of see the space. And we walked them through the different kind of supports that we can provide, how they would make an appointment. Um, made them aware of our awesome, um, admin assistant, Morgan Bridge. You know, if we weren't available, that they could reach out to her. So that was a great process this year, actually having the students come right into our space.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Kathleen Halland.
Good evening all. I'm sorry to be late. I just arrived at my hotel in New Jersey. Um, but I, I, I couldn't have asked for a better program to walk into or something that's dear to my heart. I have great appreciation for what you're doing and I hear not only the breadth of your practices, but the intensities and the unexpected. And I imagine there must be surges around midterms and around finals that you're dealing with. And I guess my most fundamental question is, do you feel like you have all the resources you need to meet the unexpected, which surely is happening?
I mean, I, I think at this time, we're, we are very well-staffed. Um, I'm excited that we do have the new, um, career exploration and innovation coordinator because I do think that that is, um, in a great resource and something that we've been lacking in really making a lot of those additional connections and taking our career exploration to the next level. So I'm very excited for that. With that being said, in addition to the guidance counselors, um, we also have four adjustment counselors and a school psychologist and we all actively work together to support our students. So if, you know, we have a student who is in need, um, if the counselor is not readily available, then there are plenty of us who jump in, who help out and who support the student. So I do think now that we're fully staffed, I think if you would have asked me that question back in October, Kathleen, I would, probably would have felt differently, but that was simply because we were, had open positions. But at this point, I do think that, you know, we have a great team and our caseloads are reasonable. Um, it doesn't mean that there aren't days where, you know, they're long and the work is hard. Um, but I do think that we're very fortunate. And so I would say at this point, yes.
Not only do I appreciate hearing about the staffing, but the attitude that you bring of meeting them and being enthusiastic and I'm sure compassion and empathy are key. Um, for the adjustment counselors, I've been alarmed at the, following the news about the Newton Public School Systems and how poorly paid their adjustment counselors are and yet how frontline they are. And I'm wondering, um, and I don't know if we can talk about this, whether they are in a position to get a healthy living wage because that's not what's happening in, um, in the Newton Public Schools, at least is the way it reads in the Globe. Um, and so it's my hope that they are actually paid quite robustly for doing the heavy lifting.
I mean, you know, all of our counselors are on the, we're all under the Unit A contract. We're all under the, you know, paid under the same salary schedule as the teachers. So, um, you know, I, I personally feel that we are, um, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not comfortable speaking to what's going on in Newton. But I can say at Algonquin Regional High School, our counselors, I think are fairly compensated, um, for the work that they're doing. Um, you know, s- at the same rate as our teachers, our classroom teachers are.
That's important to me and I, I appreciate you answering those questions. So I hope you don't mind. I'm going to go off camera to eat a bit, but I'm just thrilled to walk into this part of things. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Kathleen. Uh, Matt?
Thanks. Um, appreciate all the, the background and, um, you know, the areas that emphasis make a lot of intuitive sense to me. Um, I was just curious around career exploration. It's simple to ask his point about, uh, the projection of her as a midwife. I was curious, what if anything you're doing to track the results by student and how much of an impact it has on their, uh, choice of secondary school or not going to school, taking a particular career path or, or. or not going to school, taking a particular career path or, or anything like that, just to see if, like, how useful it is. I mean, it makes sense that you're doing it, I just wonder how much of an impact it really has.
So do you mean track, tracking after they leave us or?
Yeah, like what, what evidence do you have when you, you put students through the process of taking this test and, and exploring different careers? Like, is it really impacting the pathway that they choose?
Well, I mean, I think the larger research that's out there around career exploration supports that the earlier a student is introduced to career options and they're guided um, in, you know, researching careers, um, the better off um, they are. So a lot of the research out there does show that students greatly benefit from early career exploration. Whether or not, you know, their chosen career that they've identified in our workshop ends up being their chosen career, that may or may not be true. Um, but the fact that they're actually being introduced to career exploration and, you know, thinking about many of the opportunities and options that are available to them, starts them on the pathway. And I think we all know that it, you know, at sixteen, seventeen years old, it's hard to know what it is we're gonna do for the rest of our lives. But it gets them thinking and it opens their eyes to the many opportunities that are available for them.
And maybe I can jump in as well, Lisa. Sorry Lisa, um, and I, wonderful job so, you know, so far providing a good overview. One of the things you talked about was how the work in this sophomore guidance curriculum provides a foundation, uh, and that's what we're talking about here, of course. One of the things Michelle Kalin is starting to conclude or has concluded is that we could start to eh, build on that foundation with the sophomores and do things like a job shadow. So some, a student might, maybe it's not mid, being a midwife, of course, but maybe it's something around engineering that they find they have a certain aptitude toward it. And now we're gonna look at having a, building up potentially a job shadow program where they can actually spend some time in the presence of, with an engineer. And that, that might allow them to have a really much deeper understanding of what engineering looks like. And the reason why that's important is because maybe that might change the kinds of classes they choose for their junior and senior year. So I don't know how to answer, that's a very long way, uh, Matt, of saying, I don't know how predictive those analytics are. But they certainly give an uh, greater level of information and detail for students to make better informed choices about the colleges they might be looking at or about the kind of course of study they might take on in their remaining uh, two years at the high school.
I think that was the color I was looking for, is just how, how it impacts the guidance that they get further on.
Okay, alright, thank you Matt and John.
Um, thank you uh, for the presentation and, and I appreciate all, all of the, the positive uh, uh, influence you have uh, across our students. The question I have, maybe, maybe I just misunderstood, maybe you already answered it, but so is it possible for a student to go the whole year without talking to their guidance counselor? In other words, I guess my question is, is there a minimum amount of expectation that a student meets with their guidance counselor? Or is it really the guidance counselor acts if the student engages? Or if there's a problem, I guess, the reason why I'm asking is, is it possible to go and, you know, as a freshman, see your guidance counselor and then not see them again until senior year?
No, that should not be the case at all. We don't have any minimums per se, and of course, there's gonna be some students, you know, um, who maybe only have a, a few visits a year, right? And there might be others who maybe need more um, time, depending on whatever their particular needs are, right? So it's really kind of a balancing act, but to go from freshman year to senior year and never seeing your guidance counselor, no, that is not possible. Um, between all the workshops that we're offering for students and then the individual follow-up. Because, you know, post-secondary planning is an individual process. And so we do spend a lot of time working with our students individually on that. Um, course selection as well, we spend a good amount of time working with our students um, in helping them develop their plans and their schedules. Um, so that would be very atypical if a student went from freshman year to senior year and not, did not see their counselor.
Okay, um, thank you for that, but there is no minimum. So is it possible that, so with the caseload that you have, are, 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 are all the guidance counselors familiar with all their, their particular caseload? Or is it possible that they focus on the ones that, I guess, I'm curious. Because if, if, if a student isn't particularly, they don't know what they don't know. And so, quite frankly, they might not have a problem, they might be getting good grades. But it's quite possible if, if, if they don't know they're supposed to go there, they never go. And, and I guess, uh, um, and, and all, and all these things about course planning. So I guess I'm curious, how do you, how do you keep track of those that just aren't coming? Or, or, and, and it's not because they have a problem, it's because they don't know that they're, you know, quite frankly, a, a, a person can talk about with all their friends and they kind of figure out, this is what I wanna take for classes. And they kind of figure it out based off of that. Um, but if they don't have that sort of person intervening, I guess I'm curious how, how you address that, or is it just not, not, not considered?
It's definitely considered. I don't know if Pam or Linda, if you wanna talk about maybe how you track senior students, but it's definitely considered. And I could say, John, it's both. So there are some students who are seen more, given kind of whatever they might have going on in their life at that time, right? And there are students who maybe require less at a given time, and at any given moment that can change, that can flip. Where the student who, you know, um, everything, was coasting along and all was going well, suddenly, you know, something happens and things aren't going well, right? Um, so I do know that, you know, personally, I'm always looking at, you know, even just my list of students. Like, okay, who have I seen, who haven't I seen, right? Um, who hasn't come down, who did I send a pass to and they didn't come down for whatever reason, right? Um, and then following up with them. So I don't know, Linda, Pam, if you kind of wanna weigh in on what you do in regards to with tracking your students?
Absolutely, I'm happy to. Um, thanks for the question, John. I think it's always a concern of parents, and I'm a parent myself of little ones, that their kids are gonna fall through the cracks. Um, what I do, it's very basic. Um, I'm not like a high-tech person at all. But what I do is I have a spreadsheet and I put my kids down and I put down when they have studies um, and other courses that I could send them a pass just to check in. Um, and I try to do it during times, um, when I feel like maybe there's more authentic things that we can discuss. So tenth graders, for example, they're looking at their junior year schedule, which tends to be pretty important in the post-secondary processes, that junior year and the courses that they're taking. So usually I'll start to mix tenth graders in when we're doing the course selection. Ninth graders, I loved our workshop this year, having them in our offices, I thought was, is just such a great way for them to kind of feel relaxed. We did some icebreakers. Um, so that was a very, I think, positive interaction for them also to realize that we are here. This is where, you know, our space and you're always welcome there. Um, and so I try to do ninth graders personally, um, December. I'll be honest, December was a little crazy this year because I had um, an extra half of a course load. So I didn't get to see the ninth grader, so my hope is um, through February, that I'm gonna get to see more of my ninth graders. And then, you know, I'm, I kind of just track it that way. And then there's always kids, you know, that don't show up for whatever reason. Um, so those kids, I sometimes will, you know, call at a class, um, or come in the morning and make sure we deliver passes in the morning. So we will hit all the different hallways. So if I have a student that's in the English hallway, I'll write the student a pass and then I'll bring the student that pass. And just, so it's not an awkward sort of forced interaction. It's more like, oh hey, I just wanna make sure you got this today and I really want you to come down and, and, and chat with me. So I hope that's kind of helpful.
I can add into that too, just so you know, like, like students might talk to their friends about the courses that they wanna take. But a lot of times we have to talk with them about their alternates and things like that if it doesn't happen. And we really wanna know their plan, what they're interested in, so we can make sure that they get the classes that they want. So I pretty much see almost all of my students during course selection. And I also keep a spreadsheet, but I also keep track of every email that the parent sends me or every email that the student sends me. And then I can go off of that too. So we get a lot of information from the teachers, we get a lot of information from the parents and the students. So that we make sure that, um, you know, even if the student doesn't know it, we may know what's happened in their English class or something like that, and so then we can work with them on that too. So we get a lot of information about the students. So I feel like, not that I'm gonna be, I don't know all of my students a hundred percent, but I know a, a lot of my students pretty well.
Okay, um, I guess, I, I guess I wonder if, if there, if you would ever consider having a bit more of a process around this. It sounds like everyone does their own thing. And I guess considering all of sort of the technologies we have for, for, for gathering and, and it's consuming and keeping track of things. I guess, I, I guess I'm kind of wondering, because um, I, I guess, I, I don't know. I mean, me, me personally, I didn't know my guidance counselor at all. So that, that's perhaps where, where the genesis of my question is. I personally also haven't talked to my daughter about whether or not she's spoken with her guidance counselor. So I, and I, I haven't heard from the guidance counselor. So I guess I don't, this is, I, I'm just more of curious, it, it, it sounds to me like uh, may, may, maybe I'm just misunderstanding. And so I guess I'm just curious if, if, if you've ever thought of it. And, and maybe it's, Lisa, I, I don't know if there is ever, eh, maybe consider it. I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm by myself, I, I, I don't know.
Lisa? Um, it might be helpful, could you give us a um, sort of ballpark of what the average number of students that each uh, guidance counselor is keeping track of?
Yeah, we have about a hundred and ninety students.
And that's across all? Pardon me? That's across all four grades?
Yes, uh-huh, yep. So each have, they each have about a hundred and ninety students on their caseload roughly. Um, so we could definitely talk about it, John, and I think you're, I think you're, where your question stems from. Like, I never really knew my guidance counselor. I think, you know, um, when we were in high school, I think that was very much the case, right? Um, I don't think that guy, that the school counselors played as significant of a role um, in a student's education as they do now. You know, um, but we can certainly talk about it if what you're saying is like, you know, setting kind of like a minimum um, in regards to, you know, meeting all students. I do think that a lot of the counselors work very, very hard. Um, meeting their students, meeting their students' needs, getting to know them. Um, and of course, it's gonna naturally ramp up as they kind of move through their years in high school. Um, the number of times we're meeting them. Um, but I do think they work very hard to kind of get to know their students and establish a relationship um, and keep an eye on them, for sure.
Yeah, so, so Lisa, I, I, I'm certainly not suggesting otherwise, but I guess I'm just curious how you actually keep track of it. And, and so I guess, I, I guess to, to be able to say with a surety, yeah, you know what? We, 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 we talked with these, you know, we, we, we've talked with these kids, these eleven hundred kids, these hundred and ninety kids. We, we talked to them four times this year. And, and, you know, and, and, and that's what our standard is, and, and there is a standard. And, and I guess I've, it, because you don't know what you don't know. And so there's a, there, you know, perhaps, you know, perhaps the person that got, you know, suggested that they should be a midwife, you know, th- they, they never go back to the guidance counselor and they, they maybe come a midway, but maybe they had another choice, I don't know. Eh, eh, it's, it's an interesting uh, analogy that Cass brought up, but I'm just, I'm kind of curious. But, and, and maybe that's not appropriate, I, I don't know.
Well, yeah, we will definitely talk about it.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, uh, Paul?
Thank you, uh, thank you, all three of you for this, this has been uh, enlightening. And I, I wanted to kind of follow up on Kathleen Holland's question about resources. And it's great to hear that you, you know, you think you have all the resources you need. But say, you know, in a perfect world where money was no object and Sean Bevan comes to you tomorrow and says, I've got an extra fifty or seventy-five thousand dollars for you to, to spend this year. How would you spend it?
Well, I guess I would just say that I would spend that on personnel. Um, because I think that, you know, um, in supporting, you know, bringing our, bringing the caseloads down and making them, you know, even more manageable. Um, you know, I do, and I, and I say that just because you're asking me. Not that I think that um, the support that we're already receiving is not, you know, sufficient. But if you, if Sean came to me and said, I have another seventy thousand dollars, I'd be like, you know, let's welcome another counselor um, into our office and, you know, so then, you know, maybe we can, um, you know, bring those caseloads down even more and have, you know, more face-to-face time with all of our students. If I'm answering honestly, Paul?
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, Linda, and any other thoughts from you?
That's honestly the first thing that popped into my mind. Um, there's never, you know, I, I always say, you know, we have about six hours a day that we've got those kids. And if you try to mathematically break it all up, right? Which I haven't done, honestly, but like, it's impossible to get the time that I want, that I feel is sufficient with each child. Um, that's my favorite part about this job is the relationships that I have with the kids. Um, and the students at Algonquin are truly remarkable, and I've worked at other schools. And I absolutely love um, Algonquin. So I would say if I had the opportunity to have more face time with some of my students, I would one hundred percent take it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, John?
Uh, so on that question, I guess, Lisa and Sean, I'd ask the question. Uh, I mean, no, I, I ask the question, is a hundred and ninety students per guidance counselor, is that standard? Is that acceptable? Like, I guess my point is, should it be a hundred and thirty? Cause I, 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 I don't know, is, is that, is that what the average is? Is that above average? Eh, you know, does, does Westboro have seven hundred kids per student? I, I, I don't know, like, what, what is a one ninety? Is that a good number or is it a bad number?
Yeah, no, that's a very fair question, John. Uh, like, if you walked into a math class and you saw sixty-five kids in one single math class, you'd know, everybody would know that that's way too many. And it's a little bit hard to, uh, to achieve that same level of like immediate understanding with guidance. Uh, I, Lisa, you would probably know off the top of your head, but I, I understand that anything under two hundred is certainly at, you know, strong and adequate and healthy uh, napping. I think there are schools, I would not be surprised if more schools around Central Massachusetts are at about a one to, one counselor per two hundred and twenty-five or even two hundred and fifty kids or even greater. Um, I think that that's much more likely to be the standard than one ninety. I think we are on the kind of closer to the, the, um, the more unusual side. Um, and that said, Pam, to put a nice point on it, I think every new person you add in, or the more staffing you put in, you reduce that number, the more face time you get, which would be great. Um, just to put a fine point on it, with a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety students per, or, you know, whatever the number is, a hundred and ninety roughly that, uh, Lisa, um, our staff members are getting, you know, with your seniors, for forty-five seniors on your caseload, you have a great deal of four years of interactions with them and their family, maybe even their siblings. Definitely their administrator who's also aligned with them for the four years they're there. Um, and those interactions really um, add up to achieve a great understanding what that student's all about. And so our guidance counselors each um, write a, you know, a letter for the students, uh, those who are applying to college. And it's a, I've read these letters, they're multiple pages and they're very deeply recognizing of the relationship. Uh, or they represent a real deep understanding what the kids all about. So um, these interactions do happen, they're really organic, I think is what I'm trying to communicate, John. They, uh, and I think each, each uh, of our counselors has a different ma- way of maybe tracking it. But I think there's no instance where you have a student who just kind of coasts quietly under the radar and just uh, happens upon not ever, you know, seeing or meeting their guidance counselor. That would be so unusual, I can't even think of an instance where, you know, we have something like that happen. So I think we're well-staffed, our ratios are just about where they need to be. If we had another staff member, it'd be certainly wonderful, but I think we're about where we need to be. If we lost one or two staff members, it would, would really stress the system when we're not interested in doing that at all. I think we're at a really good uh, space, so I don't wanna speak for you entirely, Lisa, but that, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and to add on to that, um, what Sean was just saying, I do participate in the mid-watch guidance directors meetings. And so that's a topic that has come up and I can say that we are on, you know, par with the other schools, whether it's Westboro or Neshoba or Grafton or, you know, Shrewsbury. So um, we're definitely on par with the other schools. And like Sean indicated, there are schools that have higher caseloads, right? Um, and then to go back to Paul's question, that, you know, of wishful thinking. That was our answer, but again, we still have a lot of resources and our caseloads are good and, you know. So we are on par with the other schools. So we are on par with the other schools based on my work with the MidWatch, um, Directors Group.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Kathleen Holland?
Coming back around, I'm thinking about the amount of a hundred and ninety people across a hundred and eighty days. And that's really heavy lifting and, um, and it may be on par with the other schools and I'm heartened by that, but I'm also looking at. Thinking in the back of my mind about the statistics and how they're growing through the Metro West Adolescent Survey. Um, and I know that part of adolescents and young adulthood, um, is hi, is sliding and hiding. Um, and it would take a lot for, for a child to be caught by all of the adults in their life, which I really like when you created those. Maps of connections. I thought that that was a good way to catch the sliding and hiding. But I really want to really acknowledge the heavy lifting that that must be with, um, the drain on empathy and compassion because of the vulnerability. And it's my hope that you are getting all the support that you need as faculty within the faculty to do that. But I'm looking at the numbers. And it, and it does make me anxious. If that was. Child Protective Services, for example, CFS, they have these intense caseloads and boy, oh, boy. Things fall through the cracks, um, in a big way. So. I just, I'm glad that we had this conversation, Paul and John. I appreciate you. Asking these questions too. And it's something that will be on my radar just to ensure. That you all lovingly get, as you empty your wells, that you get them filled in return.
Thank you.
So I just wanted, so I just want to take a moment and thank, uh, Lisa and the Guidance Department for. The great work they do with our students. I think that Lisa alluded that this fall was really challenging. Um, but you wouldn't have known it. Um, they did the work with Grace and picked up, uh, each other and picked up the extra work and. Honestly, um, did it willingly. So I just want to thank them for that. And their work is quiet. Oftentimes their work is quiet, subtle, but really important. Um, and I don't think we, um, thank them enough for their, for their work at Algonquin and, and their important part of the much larger team.
Thank you.
I, I know we're wrapping up too, and I, I, maybe if I can jump in, I think if anything, Lisa underemphasized. How much, uh, losing two people in the middle of the year, in the middle of the college. Pro, uh, the college, uh, early admissions process, uh, while also having a maternity leave, um, somebody out on maternity leave for a small department. Just how much that distributed like a lot of labor to the other people and they handled that with great poise and. And if anything, Lisa underemphasized, you know, how, how much extra effort that was for, for the others around Pam and Andrea and, uh, Linda specifically. So. Um, so many thanks to you guys.
Thank you.
And I, I will just add that, um, a million years ago, when I was, uh, sitting on my first NEASK, uh, committee. Um, my subcommittee, whatever we were talking about, all these questions would come up because NEASK asks a million questions. And it was always, you know, well, who does, you know, blah, blah, blah. And who does, what if a student doesn't show up for, you know, s- to school for five days? And who does this? And, you know, almost who cleans the bathrooms? And the answer was always guidance. And so I think that the average parent doesn't really have an appreciation for. The fact that you guys are not just course selection and you're not just college, you know, getting everything together for college. You guys do so much more and, uh, on and off campus. And through technology and all sorts of things. And so, uh, I just want to make sure that you understand how much you're appreciated by us and, um. Keep up the good work because you certainly, certainly deserve to be fully staffed finally.
Yeah, thank you. We're excited for sure.
Thank you, Lisa. Great job today.
Thank you very much.
Can I, can I just ask?
Oh, yeah, sure, Matt, yep.
We struggle to move on from the conversation that we're having because it's so important. I think this is probably why there's so many questions and feedback. And the work that you're doing is impressive. I think you, it's no doubt you're focused on the right things, but. I think what's, what strikes me here is that there is, it, there does seem like there's a need to put some metrics around the work that you're doing. Um, I mean, I think if I, and I don't know precisely, but I think we have a, like with the teachers, it's a, the goal, you can't have a class greater than twenty-five. Where the number count is, you need the same type of math metrics for the students that you handle. When we ask you if you need more resources and you say, oh, we could use another person. And we need metrics to say like, what's the value of another person? If we brought it down to. One seventy per, uh, counselor, what value do we think we can bring back to the students other than? The obvious that, you know, better care and attention per individual can, can only lead to better things. But I think the more you can, you know, step back with your team, reflect on the fact that like, how do we organize ourselves and present the numbers that build our case? Think we're all here to get you the resources that you need to make sure that our kids have the support that they need. And I think that much is. I think we're all saying the same thing in different ways.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to, um, let you guys get back to your lives.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Parent night tomorrow night. And we'll be on to the next tomorrow night.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you're in the building most nights. Um, okay, moving on to the multi-length, multilingual. You know what I mean? Multilingual learner data and presentation.
All right. So one more thing I can guarantee, most likely this will be, uh, Rhonda Webb's last presentation to the Regional School Committee. So. Rhonda will, will present the, her annual multilingual learner data, um, set and answer any questions. So I'll turn it over to Rhonda Webb.
Uh, good evening. I'm going to share my screen first. So thank you, um, can you hear me okay? Yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about a multilingual learners. Um, to begin with, a multilingual learner, um. Is that the, let me see. Um, I'm having trouble with my slides too. It has skipped a slide. Interesting. Okay, let's try it again. All right. So to begin with, the definition of a multilingual learner is a student whose first language is not English and who is currently unable to perform. Um, a classwork, ordinary classwork in English. These are a few of the, uh, federal and state laws. When it says guidance, these are regulations that have to be put in place by every district. The link there to the Massachusetts Blueprint is from the DESI Guidance with, um, wonderful research-based information. And the L Dashboard has, uh, data on the students. Uh, it is a year old though. Um, I'll be addressing out of our strategic plan, three, um, uh, three, uh, difference, um. Uh, the empowering learners, equity of opportunity and, um. There we go, healthy and balanced learners. Uh, sharing the screen. Okay, here we go. Um, so what I'd like to share more is a federal definition because it gives more of a clearer picture. Really, a multilingual, uh, learner is a student whose difficulties in speaking, reading, writing, or understanding English language. May be sufficient to deny the, the individual the ability to meet. Uh, the state's proficient level of achievement on state assessments and the ability to successfully achieve. In the classrooms where the language of instruction is English or the opportunity to participate fully in society. What you hear, see here, um, I presented in August about our multilingual learner program. And as part of that, we take our students, uh, middle school and high school and from grade one and up. To visit a college. And so here are students listening about the course of studies at Anna Maria College. So the process becomes when a student and their family comes to Algonquin to register their students. All families fill out a home language survey, no matter what language they speak. And when a language other than English or in addition to English is mentioned, our English Language Development teachers. Take a look at that together with guidance and they have family conversations because the families know that you're on the best. And it's important to know what languages, uh, the, the students speak, if they've been schooled in that language, their literacy levels. And that's the first, uh, outreach of trust to, um, welcome our families into our schools. Uh, required by the Department of Education is that. A student must take a language proficiency screener. It is called the WIDA screener for secondary schools. And according to the results on that, students would be qualified into the multilingual program or not. Uh, parents were in communication with parents and guardians all the way through. Um, and placement letters are sent to let the students, to let the parents know or the guardians. When students qualify into the program. Those letters are also translated i- if requested by families. Together, uh, part of this intake also is, um, a mass screener that our teachers do. And of course, guidance is included, uh, looking at transcripts and setting up schedules. The nurses definitely, especially these transcripts and immunizations might come from abroad. Um, and so there is, um, this, all this process takes be anywhere between five to ten hours. Um, with each family who's coming with an additional language. Now I'm going to share district trends. So we look at the population, home languages, race and ethnicity, proficiency levels and staffing. This is again, another photo from our summer program because our students learned about entrepreneurship. And they, um, they learned how to, uh, design a product, do the market research and then offer. Uh, products to the elementary students who had also been learning about goods and services and how to spend the money. And so they had fake money to be buying the products that they were interested in. So if we look at when we started looking at, uh, the students at Algonquin, that was in, uh, two thousand and four, two thousand and five, and there were only four students. And if we look across the years, the dark green bar will show you that currently at Algonquin, there are twenty-six multilingual learners. And the light green bar are twenty-five students who have re, been reclassified for the program. So for a total of, um, fifty-one students that are ELD teachers need to be, uh, involved with in their. Uh, learning or monitoring their progress. With the students that have joined us this year, I would like to mention that, um. There are ten students who, um, are completely new to the program. Eight are in their first year of, of US schools, five in their second year with a total of seventeen students within. Three years of being in the United States, uh, schools. Uh, of note also to know that overall in our district, we have two hundred and fourteen multilingual learners. The home languages of our multilingual learners, um, in the whole of, of Algonquin. Um, and this is per, uh, parent report, but first language not English is nineteen percent. Which is, is showing the asset of multilingualism in our, um, at Algonquin. But you see that among the m- multilingual learners and former English learners, uh, you can see that the, um. Uh, the prevailing languages are Portuguese, Spanish, Russian, uh, Haitian Creole, Armenian and Arabic. Followed by Chinese, Gujarati, Tagalog, Telugu, Ukrainian and Vietnamese. And in some whole households, there is more, there are more than two languages, uh, that are happening. Um, by DESI regulations, if a family cannot, uh, access English, either in written reports or, um. Uh, in speaking, uh, we provide interpretation and translation, uh, to the families to make sure that. Uh, families are involved in the children's education. And I'd like to highlight the work of Deb Young, who is a multilingual learner specialist. For coordinating the interpretation and translation across our ten schools. And we have also done in the, in the district, when we look at technology, Parent Square, for example, is a platform. That, um, families can choose the language in which they'd like to receive the communications. And therefore they can have access to what is happening in the schools from administrators, from the superintendent, uh, busing, um. Any busing information from Keith, um, they're receiving it in their home language in order to be involved in their education. There we go. So if we look at race and ethnicity now of our students, this varies from year to year, but you'll see that there's a majority of Hispanic. Um, black, African-American students, Asian, uh, white, and two or more races are reported. Uh, we have seen an increase in, in, uh, race, the era and ethnicity over the years. Um, which, uh, is that something definitely to celebrate in our schools? The language proficiencies at Algonquin, uh, when I mentioned that we had, uh, newcomers, that means that there's students that are coming to the country. Um, and needing to learn English. Those are the students that you see here at the foundational level. So we have students at level one, which means that, of course, they speak their, their home language. Um, and may read and write in their home language, but in English, they're either don't know any words yet, or they're functioning at the word level. That would be level one entering. To all the way of expanding, which is when the Department of Education allows us to reclassify students or graduate them from the program. So you will see that currently at Algonquin, there are eleven students. The ratios, the percentages are roughly the same as last year. But these are students from levels one to a low three, so developing is divided into two levels. Low three means that they're speaking at the sentence level, a simple sentence level in English. Uh, those students need to be receiving about seven point five hours per week minimum. In English Language Development or ESL. The students who are at the transitional level need to be receiving about three point seventy-five hours per week. And of course, the demands on them, um, are, are, are increased as the lang- language level prof- proficiencies increase as well. Um, learning a language, of course, is fluid and in the four language domains, no one is, stays static at one level. Or listening, speaking, reading and writing, uh, throughout. So these are composite levels when we talk about, um, the levels one through level four. Levels five, actually, you know, you're learning a language for many more years. Students coming to Algonquin, it's really a race against time to be able to graduate. Um, so you won't see level five students here, which you have sometimes seen in the past because we have reclassified them. So to address how we work with our multilingual learners, so. It is not a homogeneous group, right? So we, um, nor do students have a fixed profile. So there are many factors that we have to take into consideration when we're working with our students. We find out about their educational background, their home language, their consistency in school, their mobility. If they come from urban or rural settings, possible trauma. Individual factors that impact learning, learning challenges, possible or diagnosed disabilities. And their post-secondary goals. We know from research that they're doing double the work because they're needing to learn English as they're also learning the high levels of content in our school. Um, this, uh, with this also plenty of other research, Harvard Immigration Initiative has va- valuable information and research available. And there's a new report by the Department of Education and Brown University. Um, called Rising Numbers Unmet Needs of Immigrant Newcomers in Massachusetts High Schools. Just published in the fall of twenty twenty-three. So a newcomer, we talk about a student who is new to the country for the first six to twelve months. Um. When we think of that, we are working with students and their acculturation. They need to adjust to a new schooling system, a different way of doing things, the culture shock that they may go through. Um, meaning adjusting to their new home. Um, and learning the language. We've got, uh, English learners or multilingual learners with disabilities. Long-term English learners, the department calls those students who are in the program for more than five years. Students who come to us with limit, limited or interrupted formal education. That might mean in the country that they're coming from or also as a result of COVID. So we do pay attention to what happened during the COVID years. And we have former English learners, the students reclassify. Um, we do need to reclassify the students quite early according to DESI guidelines. So we have to. Um, follow the academic record of students for four years, four academic years. And that is done, um, twice a year. And that is done twice a year for all students. The program model that we have in our district is called Sheltered English Immersion, SEI, it's one of the approved models by the department. And the settings that we are working in are culturally responsive classrooms, we've been doing a lot. Of understanding, like the concept of windows and mirrors. To make sure that we're reflecting the different races and ethnicities and cultures of our students. And the program has two components to it, one is a sheltered content instruction. So those are the content areas, the subjects that are taught by licensed teachers. Who also have a SEI endorsement if they're core content teachers. And of course, students are in their classes throughout the day or semester. The other part, the required part is English as a second language, also in our district called English Language Development. As there's some students that have more than one language. So this is linguistic instruction that is delivered through systematic, explicit, sustained focus on language and literacy. In the content of the context of the frameworks and the WIDA standards. We have curriculum for the classes. And it occurs several times during the day and across the week. As I indicated, that students need a certain amount of classes. According to the language proficiency levels. As regards curriculum, the Department of Education in Massachusetts follows the. The WIDA consortium. And the curriculum is based around four big ideas, one is equity of opportunity. The integration of content and language, collaboration among all stakeholders. And a functional approach to learning language, that is to re- to learn language, the English language in real context. So we're going to give you an example of a unit, this is a photo of our. Our ELD level five class, these are students who would be looking to reclassify at the end of the school year. If they score a passing score on the access test. And they're doing a formal Socratic seminar based on a unit. That they have just completed. So this is. A very brief example of what a unit looks like, this one is based on science. And it's about symbiosis, how organisms live. So language objective is, for example. Interpretive domain means receptive. So analyzing the descriptions of nonfictional textual evidence. For key attributes, activities and conceptual relationship, and there's also the expressive domain. Interpretive means listening and reading, and expressive means speaking and writing. We also know that the last domain to reach the high levels of academic proficiency is in writing. And the content objective here, as you can see, is. To learn about organisms. And symbiotic relationship, so they're also learning what this is a. In pre-teaching to be able, in the ELD classes, to be able to access biology. All our units are tied into the self competencies based on the castle framework. And. The critical thinking, so these are examples of courses according to the students that we have at Algonquin every year. We work very closely with guidance to set up the students' courses. So we have all levels of English Language Development, there's also an introduction to. US history, that's for levels one and twos. To be able to then go move into the history classes at Algonquin. There's also an academic study for students and there's a co-taught biology. That it means to say a biology teacher with an ELD teacher and a co-top math. The math teacher with an ELD teacher as well. Those subjects have been chosen because those are MCAS. MCAS tests in assessments at Algonquin. So students are held accountable through report cards. The access test, which is. A state mandated test is high stakes for our multilingual learners. And also MCAS. We are actually in the middle of our access testing. Our multilingual learners are, have to take four sessions, that is, listening, reading, speaking and writing. The window closes on February sixteen. After that window closes, in May, we will receive a district overall report. Algonquin will receive a skew, a school roster report. And then families receive individual. Of student reports, what you see here. In in our photos are students at levels one. Learning about grammar again, we make it interactive, hands-on. And as meaningful as possible, and you also see students learning about chemistry. And being able to apply the academic language, learning, learning chemistry. And use sentence phrase in order to express what they have learned. And this happens in one of our ELD classes. This is an example of a report that a family receives. They were, the families will receive the scores. Of a student in the four language domains and then an explanation of what the domains mean. So roughly this student has a composite or overall level of a two point eight. So that would be in between a level two and a level three. So once we receive the, the access reports. As a district, we analyze those scores, the reports are sent home in English and translated when needed. Students can be reclassified if they get an overall score of four point two. And a literacy score of three point nine, we look also at the classroom data. Meaning the reading and the writing, especially the writing samples at the high school level. Reclassification letters are sent home in June to families, we let them know, we congratulate the students from. Graduating from the program. These are also translated and then the students are monitored for four academic years to ensure. That they continue to grow in their academic journey. A few highlights that I would like to. Talk about tonight is the. Very close family and school partnership that we have with our families, our ELD teachers become the lifeline between. The families and students who are in the country for the first time attending our school. The collaboration that exists at Algonquin among everybody, this is really the true work of everybody working together. With the goal of seeing our students graduate. And that comes from administrators, guidance, nurses. Absolutely, everybody, and I know I'm leaving, I'm leaving people out. All content areas. Everybody working together so that this can happen, the students are in a race against time to be able to. To finish high school. The summer program that we offered and also the after-school program that we have in Algonquin, that is funded out of our Title III grant, that is. To be able to offer supplemental education to multilingual learners. Elevation is a student management system that we introduced last year. We're maximizing its use in starting this year's student success plans for students who do not make. Their progress target on the access tests. We also have language access in a group of interpreters and translators. The seal of by literacy that I know that the World Language Department addresses, but our students who already come. With other languages from their home countries are able also to graduate with a seal of by literacy. And I'd like to highlight that we do have our English learner or multilingual learner. Parent Advisory Council that has started with elected officials. Eleven members attended the Better Together Summit, that was a summit organized by the Department of Education with seven hundred participants. And here you can see the photo of, there were only three representatives from our district and the rest were parents. The top photo is about our LPAC, one of the evenings, we include the whole family, there is childcare. So that everybody can participate, we have interpreters in five languages in our meetings. And the, the meetings are very well attended. And I'd also like to highlight the culture through music and arts festival, we have students also participate. And emcee the program. These are points of contact so that we can come together, learn from each other. An international night where families and students come together also. And and just share an evening, learning about different organizations, what are both our communities of Southborough, Northborough. Have to offer our families, our preschool is there. And it's a wonderful evening to get to know each other even better. And of course. What we're all working towards in Algonquin is to see our students graduate. I'd really want to thank everybody. For just the commitment to each and all of our students, we've just had the guidance counselors present. But it is every department at Algonquin that is working towards seeing each of our students graduate. So that they can begin their journey in in life, whether postgraduate studies or in the, in the workforce. So once again, thank you. For your time and please let me know if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? No, oh, Cass?
I'm curious about the. The reason that the FELs increased and then decreased so dramatically in the graph. Towards the beginning, I don't know if you covered that, but it seems like a large increase.
So it's a really good question, so it all depends on how many students were able to reclassify. So they're not always the same students, after four years, the students are no longer, we don't, we're no longer. Following those students anymore. And there are some years that we are able to reclassify more students than other students. So in that graph, actually, and I didn't speak to it, but I can tell you, for example. It, it will vary from year to year. I will find, look for my note where I have that addressed. Here it is, it was the first. For example, within those twenty five students, for example, in June, we were able to reclassify nine students because they have to meet that score on the access test, if not, we now cannot reclassify them. So we're able to reclassify, so part of those students were. Nine that we reclassified last year, they're students in year two. And those were six students, they were students in year three. And then there were students in year four, so. They're all staggered and they will be, let's say, we follow them. Every year until. Year five. And the department calls those students ever else, because at one point they were, they were reclassified and now they become ever else. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I'm also curious, I'm not sure if this is a good answer, but do you know how much time is typically spent with an ELL family compared to an FEL or a native speaking family?
So. I I will be able to speak about the students, those are new students that come to our school with additional languages, right? So you mean, are you talking about the intake? When we first.
Yeah, the intake process and then overall they're monitoring their progress.
Right, right, so the, it's spent really during the intake pro- process and then. Helping the parents adjust to our schools and the demands of our schools, so guidance is also included in that. So that might be like a couple of hours with every family.
Great, okay, Kathleen?
Thank you.
So in the six years that I've been on committee and I bet Kathleen and Kathy and Joan and others can speak to this. I find great satisfaction in your presentations, I feel very secure. That things are going as well as they possibly could in your department, Rhoda, and I just want to really acknowledge. How big those shoes are to fill. That you're leaving behind, I know you're a tiny woman, but these are very big shoes that you were leaving behind. I really admire. What you've done here and I always feel deeply satisfied in hearing about the quality of your work and the team that you had. And so I just really want to acknowledge you with great warmth and respect.
Thank you, Kathleen, okay, Joan?
I like to echo what Kathleen said, Rhodi, I have learned so much. In my tenure here on school committee from your presentations. And even as you make your final presentation before the regional board tonight, I'm still learning things and it is so detailed. It's like, I always want to ask, can I have a copy of these slides? So I will make that request, again, may I have a copy of the slides? I would like to thank you for all the time and the effort and. You've gone overboard in so many ways and your enthusiasm. Even when you are, especially among the parents and the students and you're seeing their growth. It's just evident on you and the only thing I can wish to you is that you have a great retirement. And I know you're going to have that enthusiasm and I hope we can still keep you on rapid dial and we can still bug you in case we have some questions. But best of luck in the future and keep up your enthusiasm and that warm, smile personality. And you will be sorely missed, but thank you from the bottom of my heart, from what I have learned. About the, about the multilingual learner data in SEI courses and everything like that, and you've answered all my questions and don't have to say. I'll, I'll get back to you on that, the knowledge that you have is unsemenable, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Joan, Kathy?
Yeah, so I won't, I'll keep it very short, Rhoda, but I do want to thank you for your last presentation. And just wish you the best in your retirement and I hope you get to. Take some well-meaning time off. But you will be sorely missed and thank you so much. For what you have done for, for the region.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul?
Yeah, I'm gonna pile on here too, Rhoda, but thank you for this presentation, it's, it's always one of my favorites of the year. And I've just always been just so impressed with the work you do. And I can only imagine how much it means to the, to the students that you serve and, and not just helping them learn English, but it's just clear how much you care about these students and I. I have to believe that goes a long way toward. Not only helping them graduate and be successful in whatever they choose to do, but. But just making them feel welcome in our community, which is no small thing, so. Thank you, Rhoda, and I too wish you well.
Thank you, thank you very much, but I do want to acknowledge this is teamwork, this is having wonderful school. Wonderful district to work in, amazing educators and administrators, so nothing is done alone. Everything is done collaboratively and in with, in a team. Because one person cannot do anything alone, so I, I do want to acknowledge. Everyone that has walked along this journey and will continue to walk along this journey because I know things will continue and to grow. In a very, very caring and, and effective way. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda, and. We all feel very, very good that you are, that you have personally mentored your replacement. So we know that there are big shoes to fill, but we also know that we have the best possible candidate to fill them. And thank you for mentoring and training her.
Yes, it's a pleasure.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, so legislative update, so, but before that, I should just also thank Rhoda, but. I assure you that this won't be the only opportunity for the committee and the district to thank Rhoda for, for her work and. And commitment to them in Northborough, Southborough Public Schools, so. There will be many future opportunities in the months ahead, so, but I will publicly thank Rhoda. Because I don't think we can thank her enough, so thanks, Rhoda.
You're welcome, thank you.
And now the legislative update. So just two brief updates, the first really is around. Information we received from the state level that Governor Haley did make nine C reductions. The revenue productions did not meet the budget for FY twenty four and therefore. Typically. State aid is, is reduced and that can impact a regional school district. We typically. We typically get nervous about regional transportation reimbursement. Chapter seventy state aid and circuit breaker for special education. And however, during these nine C reductions, those three. And important revenue sources for the district were not impacted. But it does make us nervous as, again. This is not a not a positive trend in terms of state revenue to the budget that they they approved. So we'll keep an eye on that. And then secondly, the governor just released. Her the governor's budget this afternoon. And so we'll speak a little bit more about that in the budget presentation. And I just also included in the school committee's memo, the state budget process. So it is. At the early stages of the process, it usually takes four to five months. And now that the governor released her budget. Now the joint ways and means, public hearings can take place both both at the House and Senate level. So. Much more work to come, but it gives us a starting point. At this time last year with a leadership transition of governors, we didn't have the governor's budget until. Much later in the spring. So we're in a much better place in terms of having good information at this point. So those are the two legislative updates for this evening.
All right, great. Then do you want to move on to your? FY twenty five preliminary budget presentation?
Just give me a minute to share my screen. And let me get to the right slide. So, um, much work has been accomplished since the December meeting where. The FY twenty five preliminary budget was presented to the school committee. So. The high school leadership team and central office leadership team have had many meetings to work toward a revised preliminary budget. Which I will share this evening. And I think it's essential to always talk about the driving. Purpose of the budget, really it is around trying to achieve the mission and vision that is set out in our strategic plan. So the mission is simple, but I think very powerful. Is to educate, inspire, and challenge all students with the emphasis on all. And really thinking about the vision. So how can we help our students leave Algonquin Regional High School? To be prepared for the next level of work, college or career. So that they're collaborators, critical creative thinkers, communicators, socially civically engaged, growth oriented and healthy and balanced. It's hard to believe that we are in the month of January and February. In the month of January and February. We continue to have ongoing budget review and revisions. So we'll have continued operational budget subcommittee meetings. Typically in January. I present the revised preliminary, sometimes the recommended budget. And then in February, usually the school committee votes in FY twenty five budget. So in terms of where we were last year in the budget process. At the January meeting, I was presenting the revised preliminary budget. And the school committee voted a recommended budget in February, so right on target. Compared to last year. Approved budget priorities. So I think two driving documents and really guide the work at the. School level. And that is really looking at the school committee's budget priorities and also the priorities that are set out in the district's strategic plan. And I think that each year we look at ways we can. Get closer to achieving the goals that we set out. In that plan. So again, it's funding the recommended curriculum replacement cycle and explore alternative. Curriculum cost models, expanding experiential learning opportunities. It's just for juniors and seniors, but I think it's for all students. Prioritizing social and most and physical well-being of all students. So it was timely that we had the presentation from the guidance department this evening. You know, it was a priority to create a special education team chairperson. And then finance and operations again. Although these are not necessarily a budget impact, they are, they do generate savings, which. Does allow us to use the money in different ways. So seeking to achieve net zero, I'm creating and funding a special education stabilization fund. And then really looking at, how do we utilize rentals to create a a fun and fund an athletic complex maintenance? A schedule. And then, you know, the the unfunded liability that we have, OPEP, how do we create a sustainable? A funding mechanism to fund OPEP. So FY twenty FY twenty five budget impacts. So each year we enter the budget process, thinking about what are going to be the be the budget drivers. So this year, we really thought a lot about general education transportation. And we put this as a budget driver because it's really. We're at the fourth year of our contract with NRT. And we have the opportunity to extend it one more year for fifth year. But if we went out to bid, went out to market for a new transportation contractor. We're anticipating anywhere between a twenty and twenty five percent increase in transportation costs. Supplies and material costs. So again, although inflation has moderated, we're still seeing some impacts to certain supplies and materials. Insurance costs. And then S R phase out. So we have to expend S R funding by the end of. Twenty four. We've done our best to try not to create structural deficits using the S R funding that we've had over the past several years. However, you know, we we did. Try to offset our FY twenty four budget, which means we need to put those expenses back on. Our operational budget for FY twenty five. And we purchase things, not people with S R funds. And we thought was, that was the wisest. Method to use those funds effectively. So in terms of where we are today. You know, I think that the preliminary budget that we presented in December was a ten point three one percent increase. That included a number of assumptions and also played for some cost drivers that we saw in fiscal year twenty four. Since that time, again, the leadership team has met. We've had many meetings about. Thinking about our goals and the strategic plan, the budget priorities. And what reductions we can make without impacting. The student experience. So the revised preliminary budget that I'm sharing with you this evening. Is twenty seven million eight hundred seventy one thousand four hundred twenty seven dollars. Which represents a four point eight two percent increase. And to benchmark it to last year, at this time, the revised preliminary budget that was presented to the committee was at a four point five percent increase. So in the fiscal year proposed budget, these are the positions that were asked for. And that rows that are highlighted in the green are the positions positions that are included in the budget. So. A point two FTE adaptive physical education teacher. So this is a shared position across all three districts and. The projected cost is Southborough share, I mean, Northborough Southborough share. Educational support professionals. So we worked with our student support services team to look at what supports. Our students will need next year in terms of service delivery grids. So that is a one point O ESP position included in this budget. And then lastly, a speech and language pathologist, an SLP, again, to increase. The need, you know, this meet the student needs based on our overall overall caseloads, numbers and trends. And so what is not in this budget is assistant director of multilingual learners and equity. Thirty four thousand five hundred is Northborough Southborough's portion of of that. A human resource generalist. A point five library ESP. And the team chairperson. And lastly, a varsity assistant coaches. So those positions are not included in this revised preliminary. And so offsets, so each year we talk about budget offsets. So in the preliminary budget, we already had included the FY twenty first circuit breaker tuition reimbursement offset. And also FY twenty four circuit breaker transportation reimbursement. And the finance department also worked on calculating FY twenty four five circuit breaker. And we applied a hundred thousand dollars of FY twenty five circuit breaker tuition reimbursement. So the total offsets. Are a little over seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Instructional materials that are included in the FY twenty five budget. Textbooks, and I would say curriculum materials. So it provides funding for mathematics. And a few other areas, curriculum areas. Student staff devices. So again, that allows us to move forward with the one-to-one Chromebook plan that. That was established. So currently the freshmen have Chromebooks. The donation from Chelmsford helped. And this allows us also to move. An additional year toward the four-year plan that we have. And then learning alley soft ally software. This is. A resource of audiobooks, academic audiobooks that are available to students. So are any textbooks educators are using, any materials? They're included as audio for students to access who need that. A type of resource. So the total of instructional materials included in this budget is a little over eighty seven thousand dollars. And then in terms of. Significant budget increases. So a comparison of the preliminary budget that was presented. In December to the work that was accomplished since then. The tech infrastructure maintenance was not changed, so so no difference. We are seeing an increase in Worcester Regional Retirement System of a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. Special ed out of district transportation. From the preliminary to the revised preliminary, we did see a slight reduction of about twenty thousand dollars. Transportation. So in the preliminary budget, we assume that we would go out to bid and and seek a new contractor for for transportation. Our recommendation to this evening is that we continue with the. Execute the fifth year option with our current transportation provider. And I'll stop and I see John has his hand raised.
So sorry, Greg, I just see the tech infrastructure and maintenance budget at fifty thousand. I I recall. Right around this time last year, we had that issue with the wifi and security, et cetera. I know, Keith, that you were taking actions and I obviously I don't hear from Cass, so. Clearly, it's not a student concern anymore, but I I guess are we happy with our infrastructure from a technical perspective? Do we feel that we have enough money in the budget to ensure that we're staying? At the whatever level you you want to be comfortable at. I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, and I Keith, you can, I don't know if you want to start, you want me to take this question, you can add.
Why don't you start, Greg, and then I'll add.
Yeah, so I think that we are in a much better place in terms of where we were a year ago. I think that. I think we've made some additions to our our servers and our infrastructure, tech infrastructure, our switches. I would share that there's always more money that could be utilized in our infrastructure. I think that. John, I know you're in, you know, you you're involved in the tech sector or finance, so you you understand the risks that are out there. We're competing against not just. High school students at times who are trying to get into our network, but all the bad actors across the globe were trying to access our our network. We do, you know, we do have a net server, we've put in some safeguards, but we could always see an increase in this. We are seeking out some grants. Grant opportunities that are specifically focused on improving network infrastructures for districts. I think also we are moving to a more managed service of security and infrastructure. So that is, I think, something that we feel more comfortable. Moving forward with. But I think for now, we've made some incremental improvements. I think this this continues the growth. But similar to guidance, when you ask, you know, I think there's always more we could be doing. But this, I think this is, this helps to incrementally grow.
Yeah, no, so I I wasn't, I was, I I I wasn't criticizing guidance, I wasn't criticizing this. I I just wanted to make sure you felt comfortable. So it sounds like you do, and that's 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 a perfect answer. So I I'm glad. So it's great, thank you. But I think Keith really wanted to say something, so we should let him.
I I would just add one more piece is that I I think a very thoughtful. Inventory has been done of what we have from an infrastructure perspective. And then making smart decisions about how we monitor those devices and then what is our replacement cycle through a thoughtful plan. So. I think a lot of time and energy being put into that so that we can make some, do some good planning, not just. You know, for for the months ahead, but the years ahead of out as things become legacy and. And as we move forward with different software updates and adjusting to that. So. You know, this is something that we're paying attention to across the board and certainly Algonquin is part is part of that cycle. But I would say collectively, Algonquin is in a pretty favorable position.
The the only last thing I would add is this is thirty percent of the tech infrastructure and maintenance budget. Because the other forty percent is Northborough and thirty percent is Southborough. So we we share kind of. The central system at Algonquin. So this is. Northborough Southborough's portion of maintaining our tech infrastructure and maintenance.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money.
No, I I would trade budgets with you.
Can't do that, but thank you.
So the the transportation really. Supports a recommendation to. Execute the fifth year of the contract with NRT, and that's a fixed cost. We know that cost, that's twenty five thousand dollars. Maintenance of buildings, so. It's from the request from Mike Gorman. It's about a hun- it's about a. Eighty thousand dollar reduction. However, this also. Takes into account that we're moving forward three hundred ninety thousand dollars worth of capital projects forward to the towns. And lastly, classroom instructional technology. So reduced about fifty thousand dollars. And again, this is utilizing other funding mechanisms to purchase that classroom instructional technology. So the difference from the preliminary to the revised preliminary is five hundred and forty five thousand thirty dollars. Of budget increases. In the next slide, continued significant budgets. We had, we already had the circuit breaker reimbursement, transportation reimbursement. Staff reductions due to enrollment, so due to retirement and attrition. Special education adjustments. So again, looking at placement of students. Transportation and then insurance. So revised preliminary is one. One million two hundred five thousand two hundred sixty six dollars less than the preliminary budget that was presented. So the budget before the committee this evening is, again, twenty seven million eight hundred seventy one thousand four hundred twenty seven dollars. Which reflects a four point eight two percent increase over fiscal year twenty four. I I do see that, I do feel like we're in a very different fiscal landscape than we were a year ago at this time. At this time, I had presented a four point five percent budget increase. And we we were able to continue to winnow that down to a three point three six percent. I I think the the floor. Of the budget that that we could get to based on all the work of the leadership team is the four point eight two percent. I do not predict that this budget, the recommended budget going any lower than this. Without having a significant impact on the level of of services to students. And staffing levels. Just a historical overview of budget increases over the years. So I think the budget increases have been very modest. You know, it's ranged from any from four point one three percent to three point five percent in terms of. To a three point three six percent. You'll notice in FY twenty one, it was a one point five percent. I think we're still recovering from. I think we're still recovering from from that budget increase. And then the impact of inflation in twenty two and twenty three. And I think that is some of the reason why this evening we're at a four point eight two percent budget. And then, and then I'll just speak briefly about the apportionment. So again, the budget is apportioned by by, you know, by the regional agreement and the state. So the twenty seven, eight seventy one, four twenty seven, we subtract state aid. And this reflects, Becky, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we updated this information with the governor's budget numbers, is that correct, Becky?
That's correct. The only one that is not updated is the regional transportation aid because that number has not been released yet.
So this is the governor's state aid, usually that is the floor, usually the House and the Senate. Usually the money increases. Regional transportation is the FY twenty four, a number, and then revenues. So that is that total is subtracted from the aggregate budget. And that is twenty three million, six hundred and fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And then the other minimum local contribution, Becky, are these actual numbers?
Yes, that was released.
Okay, so this is hot off the press. That we have North Bros MLC, and again, that is a number calculated by the state for both North Bro and South Bro. That is subtracted from the twenty three, six, five, seven, seven sixty. And the amount remaining is then apportioned by the regional agreement, and that is based on enrollment. So the ten million, one hundred and seventy two thousand, thirty five dollars. North Bros portion of it is sixty one point five four percent and South Bros portion is thirty eight point four six percent. This is based on October one enrollment. We apportion it by the regional agreement, so you see each of North Bros share and South Bros portion. We had the minimum local contribution. And then that is North Bros portion of the budget it needs to pay and then South Bros. You can see where it compares to the FY twenty four assessments and the difference. So we take the difference and without applying any excess deficiency. North Bros assessment increases by eight point three one percent. And South Bros assessment increases by seven point two two percent. And our recommendation to the school committee is to apply six hundred and seventy five thousand of E and D to reduce each of the town's assessments. That would reduce North Bros assessment to five point three seven percent. And South, South Bros to four point three three seven percent. I would say say that typically we do not see parity in assessment increases. I think this is the closest we've ever been where there's been a parity between the two towns off by a percentage. And then lastly, on the agenda is the old business, we really talk about FY twenty five capital and a warrant article approval. So Becky and I have been having some conversations around what's the best mechanism to have the three hundred ninety one thousand dollars for capital improvements voted or approved. So there are two ways, one's a warrant article, which we'll talk later. The second way is adding it to the assessment. So it would be part of our overall budget assessment to the town. So if you take the you take the three hundred ninety one thousand and apportion it by the enrollment. It would be an increase to North Pro of a one point zero three percent. And then South Pro a point six four percent. And there's, you know, our recommendation really is to have it as a non exempt capital assessment. Excuse me, versus going to warrant article. The warrant article has more of a chance to fail in each of the communities and therefore wouldn't allow us to move forward with these important capital projects. And I'll stop and I see Matt has a hand.
If you went, I apologize to do this to you real time, but if you went back to the the page with the assessment and the use of the E and D. And I feel like I've asked this question before, but then I was just looking at the materials provided, like the the six hundred and seventy five thousand E and D. The allocation under North Bar on South Bro there is greater than seven twenty one, three seventy three and three sixty eight. I guess I would have thought that some of those would be six seventy five, which I think is what was in the original meeting materials.
That's actually the increase, showing the increase from FY twenty four to FY twenty five.
So you can't see the formula behind this, Matt, that's the challenge.
So it's the increase of the use of E and D from from year over year?
So if you look up above where we have the difference from FY twenty four, where it's one million, one hundred fourteen thousand. By the six seventy five, North Bros would be seven twenty one.
All right, I'm okay, I think I understand it now, I appreciate what you're doing.
We don't, we don't show in this calculation and we don't show row is the amount of E and D. It's kind of embedded in this.
Yep, now I know I'm there, thank you for the reminder, I think I probably had the same question last year.
Kathy.
So taking a six seventy five from E and D, does that leave us enough money from what we made the policy for?
Yeah, so we've, we've done forecasting of E and D, so we'd still be within the school committee's policy, E and D policy.
Okay, and then second, are these percentages anything that the town managers would be happy with, or do we still have to play with it?
Well, I think that there's very little we can do in terms of the assessments to each community other than lowering our lowering our aggregate budget. So, you know, oftentimes, you know, we'll hear from the towns, say, can you reduce our assessments? The only mechanism we have is to look at our four point eight two percent budget, for example. Reduce that significantly and that will impact the overall assessment to the community. Or the other mechanism we have is apply E and D. So I think we've, we've had preliminary conversations with each of the towns. They are, they're within what their projections were. They're a little higher than they would like. But but that's something they usually tell us each year, that it's higher than they would like, they would probably like these at zero. But that's not.
So could the governor's budget come back where like this could look better for us versus?
I, yeah, I think the two areas where we could see maybe some improvement is regional transportation reimbursement, that's unknown. The House and the Senate budgets could actually increase Chapter seventy, so that could, that could be favorable to each of the communities. I think what we're looking at here is what I'm projecting to be the worst case scenario of the percent increase to each of the towns. And, you know, honestly, at this point in time, I don't feel comfortable. I don't see a pathway to to reduce from the four point eight two percent without really impacting staffing levels and student experience. I think we're, we're at, we're at the point where we're providing a level service budget with a few incremental growth areas. But I I'm, you know, I don't see the work from now until the recommended budget presentation really having a significant impact on what I'm presenting this evening. Uh, Matt.
Trying to see if I have the right understanding. So where you present a total budget increase of four point eight percent on your total budget for the year. But the assessments are, I guess, before the use of the six seventy five is greater than that. Is it, is because the state revenues are down? So it's causing the the towns to have to pay more to contribute to the budget, which is why the percentage increase is greater than the the four point eight.
It's a shifting enrollment, it apportionment of, you know, chap of the remaining amount after we subtract certain state aid and transportation reimbursement and investments. And then we look at minimum local contribution, so those are all factors that play into it. So it's hard to peel out one thing that is the driver each year. Becky, do you want to add?
Yeah, and just for a reference, the for the minimum local contributions, North Bros saw an increase in theirs of one hundred and seventeen thousand over last year and South Bros was just about thirty six thousand over last year. So we never know what those numbers are going to be and that obviously factors into their increase because their minimum local contribution is what they're required to pay before we apply the regional assessment and the the percentages.
And and I will share, Matt, the way we approach the budget process, we don't think about the assessments. We think about what are our budget priorities and goals and what do we need to accomplish those? So we work on this aggregate budget and we don't really, we don't factor in all those other pieces. We then take our aggregate budget, thinking of how we can accomplish the goals and strategies. And then put it into the formulas to see where it falls out. So it's more of, again, enrollment has a lot to do with it. The funding formula, Chapter seventy, has a lot to do with it. Changing, changing numbers from state aid can impact the budgets. What we're seeing right now with the governor's budget is that it's pretty much level funded from FY twenty four. We're not seeing significant increases, we're not seeing any decreases at this point in state aid. And and we don't know the Chapter seven, the transportation reimbursement number yet.
And and we're not, so we're not seeing any benefits of the increased state taxes that were for the millionaire tax that was meant to support education?
No, not, I I think if you looked in the formula somewhere, maybe, but I don't, we are not feeling that impact. We're not seeing increased state aid. You know, I think, I think the reality is North Bro and the town of South Bro are are considered wealthy communities. And wealth factor is part of the funding formula, and that that is a driver that that we see impacts the two towns.
And one thing that I'm hearing too, and like in my circles, is that the millionaire's tax is really going to be used to fund the Student Opportunity Act because they really didn't have a funding mechanism for that. And so we're actually in the, I think it's the fourth year of the implementation of the SOA. And so they're basically using that money for something that they promised to provide funding for, but did not have the backing for.
So, so the last thing I would just share is that we we do have a high level, you know, our foundation is a high level of service. It's not, you know, I would say that, you know, many, you know, again, many other districts would would love to have the set of resources that we have, the people resources, the curriculum resources. So we have a high level of service. And really, our goal for this budget is to maintain those resources and level of service for students. And and it me, it doesn't mean that there's not opportunities for improvement and growth. And and I will add, you know, we heard a great presentation from the guidance department. You know, and and I'm not picking on you, John, but I'll just use your example. You know, really, it's what is the standard we want to have, you know, for, you know, I'll use guidance because we talked about it. What are the, what's the standard, you know, there's the, there's the state standard and the national standard. You know, we can say we're above the state standard in terms of caseload. But what is the state standard that we want for our guidance department to have? And what are those touch points that, you know, if we're going to say minimum touch points of six for every student every year? You know, some of those improvements don't cost money. We can build those systems internally and there are examples all over. You know, there's always improvement in more efficiencies in our work that can really help us better serve our students or serve all students. Right, the part, the other thing that I would just like to share is, I think the past few years, we've put forward proposals, proposals to reduce the fees for students. So as you know, student activity fee, we successfully accomplished removal of. And I'm going to ask Becky just to share a proposal for discussion around athletic fees and a potential pathway to consider reducing those fees. Because I think it's an important part of the budget conversation to continue to have each year, otherwise it gets lost. And so Becky, would you mind, do you want me to share my screen again, Becky?
Sure, because I don't think I'm a co-host.
While you're waiting, Paul, do you have a question?
Yeah, Greg, I know you said the towns would love to see a zero percent increase, but I think in December, you said their guidance was between four and a half and six percent. That was early, can you give us an update on what the latest guidance is?
Yeah, so I continue to meet with the town boards and committees. So we're, we're within the range still with this, this budget, this regional budget. I think that they had five percent. And then we're between a four point five and five percent in terms of what they're projecting that they could afford. And assessments that each town is experiencing is within kind of their projected ranges as well.
Okay, because, I mean, I I heard you saying like we we shouldn't expect this budget to go any lower, but I wonder what happens if it goes a little higher. And like maybe some of the positions that we that we're not in here, that we put them in, I mean. I don't know, given, given the rate of inflation and everything else, it's like, I don't think it's out of out of the question that our budget could be a little higher than it is right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously it could go higher and that's, you know, needing some guidance from the school committee too. You know, if if the school committee wanted us to go back to the drawing board and see what we would add. I mean, I think we should always be prepared for that. So we can have those conversations.
I mean, I I'd love to have that discussion, I mean, between you and Sean and, you know.
Yeah, I think definitely we can continue, you know, we we had a budget meeting today. So we plan, we try to plan for a very various scenarios in both directions, a reduction and an increase. So we will continue though, having those conversations around what we can add. We do need an operational budget subcommittee meeting, so that is another place where we can discuss some thinking around that. All right, let me find the presentation. One minute.
Probably could have just made the co-host and then.
And I still can, Becky. There you go.
Okay. Okay, so as Greg indicated, we just wanted to have a conversation about the athletic fees because this is something that we had talked about, I believe, two years ago or so when we were initially talking about reducing the student activity fees. But just for a little bit of a background on the athletic fees. So they, we are allowed to collect and also maintain a revolving account according to Mass General Law, Chapter seventy one, Section forty seven, and we do follow that closely. We did institute athletic fees in fiscal year nineteen ninety six, so almost thirty years ago. There is currently an annual fee of two hundred dollars per student per season and each family has a cap of nine hundred dollars. That amount was set back in fiscal year twenty sixteen. And then prior to that, there was no cap for a family. One thing of note is in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year, if you recall, we did reduce the athletic fee to one hundred and fifty dollars per student, and that was because of the of COVID and the change in the way that the athletic seasons were running. And then when I presented to the school committee on a monthly basis, the athletic Um, and then when I presented the school committee on a monthly basis, the athletic um, revolving account budget, um, the these fees are actually what are used to pay for certain salaries for our game officials, for any of the equipment, um, and then um, also for transportation um, related to any tournament play. Um, regular uh, games are covered through the operational budget. Um, so this is just an overview of the athletic fees that have been received. I went back to fiscal year nineteen to just show you um, what it has looked like over the past five years. So obviously fiscal year nineteen was our highest point when we had um, just over two hundred sixty six thousand dollars in revenues. Um, in twenty twenty, um, fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, we only had two seasons that year. Um, because the spring season was obviously um, canceled, so that's what's reflective in those athletic fees. And then FY twenty one does also um, reflect the reduced, um, the reduced fees that were charged for that year. Um, so twenty FY twenty two and FY twenty three, we really resor- resumed normalcy. Uh, and last year, we, I'm sorry, two years ago, we collected about two hundred and twenty three thousand. And last year it was two hundred and thirteen thousand in athletic fees that we received. So I think the difference in FY nineteen is really, we're looking at a difference in enrollment as well. Um, and I do think that participation, um, it was a little bit higher in athletics at that time as in speaking with Mike Mosserino. So in taking those numbers, what we did was we put together um, two averages. The first one is a five-year average, which does include those two, um, I think years that we probably don't want to look at, and that would be FY twenty and FY twenty one. Um, just to give us a sense um, for what our average um, fees, our gate receipts and all of our revenue looks like. And then also looking at our operational budget expenditures. So the five-year average um, for our expenditures using FY nineteen through twenty three, what for uh, expenditures was two hundred and thirty eight thousand, three hundred and fifty five dollars, while our revenues were were about two hundred and forty one thousand. So you could see we're very close to um, to where we um, would project our revenues and our expenditures to be. Um, the, using a three-year average, if I take out those two COVID years that um, were a little um, less normal, um, our revenues were just under two hundred and eighty thousand, and our um, expenditures were just under two hundred and seventy thousand. Um, and then looking at our operational budget expenditures, the same thing. Five-year average is about five hundred and thirty two thousand, and then a three-year average is five hundred and sixty seven thousand. So if we were to um, increase the operational budget, we would be looking at approximately, I would say about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that would need to be added to cover all of these expenses at one time. So what we did was we put together two different scenarios. We put together a five-year phase-out plan. Um, first, and so that would be, uh, I guess a lower um, impact to the budget. Um, there are some uh, assumptions that we built into this. We would, um, we're looking at the current athletic fee of two hundred dollars with the nine hundred dollar family cap. We're assuming that one thousand fifty athletes participate in sports annually, and that's based on numbers that um, were provided to me by Mike Mosserino. Um, and then we also are looking at the increase from year to year based on the average of the fee receipt of the fee receipts that we saw over that three-year period. And just a reminder that one percent of the current year, um, the current fiscal year budget is two hundred and sixty five thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. So if we were to break that down, we would be reducing um, the fee starting in FY twenty five, um, where it would go from two hundred dollars to one hundred and sixty dollars. Um, we would anticipate collecting about one hundred and sixty eight thousand, and we would then need to increase our operational budget by just about sixty seven thousand dollars. Um, and we would then move that out to FY twenty six, where we would again have a forty dollar reduction, bringing that down to one hundred and twenty dollars for a fee. Um, assuming we're collecting um, one hundred and twenty six thousand, that would be used off- uh, offset. And then we would be enough, and I'm sorry, and it add to the operational budget of one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, and you can see, we phased that out over the five years, and ultimately, it would be an increase to the operational budget. And that would um, end in FY twenty nine. We've also put together a three-year plan that is a little more aggressive. Um, and so next year, we would start with a fee of one hundred and thirty dollars. The following year, seventy dollars down to zero. Um, so you'd see over the next three years, we would be adding um, approximately one hundred to uh, a thousand dollars onto the budget or so. Um, ending at the two hundred and thirty four that would be added to the FY twenty seven budget. Just um, to let you know, right now, the FY twenty five budget does not include either of these scenarios in it. But these are just some of the um, scenarios that we have been thinking about and would like to present to the school committee for their consideration. So I don't know if there are any questions.
Um, th- th- this is, this is great information. Thank you. Um, sorry, I didn't raise my hand. Um, may I ask a question, Kathleen? Oh, uh, remind me, are there any other fees for any other groups other than, of course, like, you know, uh, overnight trips and stuff like that, like eh eh eh, et cetera? Are there any other fees? Does band have fees? Like, is anyone else have any fees? Is athletics the only one? So if we were to, if we remove these fees, are there any other fees left in at Algonquin that some people would be paying?
The only other fees would be the parking fees. Um, other than that, we did eliminate the student activity fees, and those were, would have covered like the, your musicals and your, your different clubs and activities. But those were eliminated. This is actually the first year that we do not have the student activity fees.
Um, Becky, we might want to think about uh, uh, class dues as, um, I know that that we don't call it a fee. I don't know that there's a difference between dues and fees. Um, but that's something that I, we haven't really gotten into, but that, uh, like if our family at home, I'd be thinking about that as a cost.
So wha- what is a due, Sean? What what does, what do you use a due for?
Best dues are are uh, are collected year to year, a- and they contribute to some of the major events primarily in senior year. I have to get kind of a real breakdown of exactly what that looks like, but um, it really affords, uh, allows us to do big events and kids' senior years, um, like, you know, well, the big classic kind of a um, uh, end-of-year events, like a senior ball and and things like that without incur a huge cost there in that last year. It kind of built up over time.
It also often goes directly to supporting the um, graduation attire and um, other traditional things that uh, they had, they would have to pay for otherwise out of pocket. Um, and overall, it's normally between ninety to a hundred dollars collected overall, and it's normally um, about thirty dollars per year across three years of schooling. And guidance is always available to help students that are unable to pay those fees.
Right, okay, Kathy?
Um, all right, so you guys, so FY twenty five, so we're talking this budget, this budget, right? Why is this budget another scenario, like, starting the year after that?
Yeah, I mean, I I think, as Becky mentioned, there are no reduction in athletic fees in FY twenty five, our revised preliminary budget presentation.
Okay. And so what happens when Mike comes to us and tells us, asks us that, or like, that he needs new uniforms? Where does that money come from?
So the money comes from a variety of sources. It does come from the fees that are collected. Um, and then um, Mike does have a schedule that um, he does maintain for the replacement of athletic um, uniforms. Um, it's my understanding that um, if a team wants to accelerate that process, um, then they have that ability, but they would do that through fundraising.
Well, yeah, so like the football team did that. Kathleen, you remember, we did that years ago for the football team. So when it comes down to like it being a zero funds, then it'll be more money tacked on if we have to do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, my, my recommendation to the committee is not to reduce the athletic fee in FY twenty five. But continue having it on the radar for discussion, um, and potentially uh, have a five-year plan implemented uh, beginning in FY twenty six.
And does the, do the gate revenue, can the, so the gate revenues, though, still come into the budget? So could they like make a line item for that to go against like uniforming, but like, and I just talking like later on, like when we decide to do this, because honestly, I had three kids playing three sports. So I spent a ton of money at Algonquin for six years towards that, so I would love to see it. I just think we have to do it in a slow process as we did the other fees that we have reduced down to zero.
Yeah, Kathy, the gate receipts would um, go into an athletic revolving account, just as they do now, and it would help to offset those um, costs.
Right, thank you.
Hi, John.
Uh, thank you, Kathleen. I'd just like to add one thing to uh, a detail about the class dues uh, for John. And that is that the class dues, what is left into that account then is given to the graduating class and the class president and the class secretary or treasurer then puts that money into an account, and they use that for future reunions that they will have. And I know that is a fact because my daughter was the class secretary treasurer and in two thousand and two. And there are two signatures that are needed on to get that money when they graduate, and that is the class president and the class secretary or treasurer.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, another thing to keep in mind on athletics, uh, the athletic fee is is kind of only the beginning because there's all sorts of incidental fees that you wind up paying, whether it's fundraisers, you know, selling popcorn or whatever. And uh, there's pasta dinners all through the season that, you know, parents are asked to contribute to. None of it's mandatory, but, you know, it's out there, so. I don't know, I I could see we're getting rid of these fees would be a good thing. Um, on the other hand, I don't, do we have any data on how many students are asking for waivers from the fees?
I don't have that information, but we could find that out.
Yeah, we do track the data, so we can get that to you, Paul.
Okay.
It's small, it's a small percentage.
Okay, Kathy, is that you again, or?
That's that.
Is that you again, or did you just not put your hand out?
I'm so sorry if I take it down. Although I do have to say, Dan Kalenda would be so happy if we got rid of this.
Okay, John?
Sorry, so I have to say, if we got rid of all the fees for the non-athletic sports, uh, things, I think we have to do it for the sports because I don't think that they should be isolated. And I I I, I think, eh, I guess I would advocate, you know, I know Paul was talking about how can we, you know, do a little more with the budget. I don't know that, I I mean, I I know you're recommending, Greg, we do it in twenty twenty six, but I think we gotta start it at some point, in my opinion, but could be wrong. Also, the question I might ask Becky is, I noticed in both of those models, the cap still remained at nine hundred. Did you consider reducing the cap as percentage-wise? If you go down forty dollars, did you go percentage-wise to the cap decrement? Because you probably should. If you decrease it by forty dollars, you should, that's, uh, what's that? Um, that's twenty percent. You should probably decrease it by um, a hundred and eighty dollar, uh, eighty, ninety dollars.
Yeah, that's a great one.
And then I'll just add to that there are other models we could, we could use. We could use a seven-year model. We could use a ten-year model, so I think the um, you know, I think the three and five-year model, I think the three-year models are very aggressive. I think the 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 five-year model is moderate, but it's something else we could, you know, we could look at a, a seven-year model, implementing it in FY twenty five to start. It sends a message, and it it doesn't prohibit the school committee from accelerating that at a faster rate. Um, so that's another thing we could provide the committee and and recommend in budget, some other options as well.
Kathleen?
I'm wondering if a reduction or elimination of fees is a trend in school systems because it seems for decades, there have always been fees attached to extracurricular activities.
I think once you add a fee, it's very difficult to remove the fee. I think that unless school committees and districts are paying attention to it, those fees uh, are perpetual, unfortunately. Um, so I think it's bringing it to the table every year to have a conversation. I I think that I don't see other districts removing fees at this point in time. In fact, they have a lot more fees than we have.
Kathy?
Sorry, do you have one more question? So um, some sports are cheaper to play than others. So if you play ice hockey, do we, taking away the fee, does that impact um, ice time for practices and stuff?
Well, we would um, we would include those on the operational budget. Um, we would factor in what it is that they're currently expending for ice tom- time and make sure that that is included when we're preparing our, our operational budgets.
Okay.
And I I don't know that it's totally relevant, and I don't have the total, the exact details. I think Becky, our ice hockey players pay an increased fee because there's, they do not. Is that correct?
Oh, they pay, they pay the same amount.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Are we ready to move on to transportation?
Yes, and another very exciting topic. Uh, so so Keith will provide a um, brief overview of transportation, and we touched upon it a little bit on the, in the budget presentation.
Yes, thank you, Greg. And and as Greg said it in his budget presentation, uh, there was a background to that recommendation that I kind of wanted to share. Uh, included in your packet is a transportation update, um, not only about current conditions um, of what we're experiencing, um, but also a review of the options that are uh, in front of us uh, with our recommendation, of course, being for the extension of NRT into their, into their fifth year with uh, conditions on performance. And that's what the uh, report that was included in your packet kind of gets into. But when we were reviewing the different things that we could do and looking ahead, there were four options on the table. The first being that we would uh, extend NRT for the fifth year, the contract, which is allowed by um, the procurement that we did for that uh, um, contract. Also, the second option would be to procure a new contract, which would uh, involve a full, fresh uh, invitation for bid. And as Greg mentioned in his presentation, we would be forecasting that that would be anywhere between a twenty to twenty-five percent increase off of current um, numbers, and it might even be higher than that uh, before all is said and done. The third option uh, would be to purchase our bu- buses and contract out for all related services. And I think quickly, both that and option four, which would bring all transportation services under the district operation, both of those would be, require a much deeper and exhaustive uh, investigation, and it would be ruled out for the, for the upcoming school year. So when we boil down to it, we're really looking at options one and two as being feasible, and because of the unknown uh, market for uh, transportation services, uh, that is why we landed on option one as our recommendation uh, going forward for, for FY twenty five. The other thing I would mention that with that recommendation comes a lot of work with NRT. We have engaged with upper management on an action plan of different things that we're experiencing, and we are seeing growth and improvement on that, um, even in the infancy of that plan. So I am meeting with the vice president of operations on a bi-weekly basis uh, to update that plan and make sure that we're not taking any steps back, but we are in fact taking steps forward. And I can say that uh, we have uh, been, been making some incremental uh, improvements over the last month or so, which I'm very happy to report. Um, so I would gladly answer any questions about uh, the update that I provided, and certainly the options that were in front of us.
Any questions? Kaz?
Hi, sorry, I don't know if this is something you know. I just was curious, across the district, do you know what time the earliest is that students are being dropped off with transportation?
Dropped off in the afternoon, Kaz?
Uh, at high schools, or like schools in the morning.
I don't understand your question. What time are they picked up in the morning, you mean?
What is the earliest that they arrive at school in the morning?
Early, so, yeah, so they are arriving at uh, seven twenty in the morning at uh, Melican and Trotter. Early, so yeah, so they are arriving at uh seven twenty in the morning at uh Melican and Trotter. And then going directly to the the high school for the second stage of that drop off. So the earliest that they're being dropped off at the middle schools is seven twenty AM.
Okay, and the school time start is seven forty five, is that correct? Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions for Keith? Okay. Then I guess we will move on to approval of grants and donations. Thank you, Keith.
We have three grants for the committee's um approval. Um, federal SR three state set aside an amount of ten thousand dollars. Um, and Becky, correct me if I'm wrong, this is for um. The work we're doing around attendance.
That's correct, it's the chronic absenteeism grant.
The second um is approval of donations to the Unified Singing Club from the American Legion Post uh. Two twenty one and the amount of hundred dollars. And the American Legion auxiliary post number sixteen twenty and the amount of two hundred dollars, so very grateful for that donation. Um, and those are the two donations and a a grant for approval this evening.
Does anybody have any questions about them? Hearing none, then do I hear a motion? For approving the grants of federal SR three state set aside CFDA. CFDA eight four point four two five U in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And the approval of donations to the Unified Singing Club from the American Legion Post two twenty one in the amount of one hundred dollars. And the American Legion Auxiliary Post number sixteen twenty eight in the amount of two hundred dollars. And that's it. Do I hear that motion? So moved by Kathy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Definitely by Kathleen. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, I'll do it by my screen. Um, John?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And me Kathleen, that is unanimous. And thank you very much, everyone, for those donations. Um. Approval of the power purchase agreement between Northborough South Regional School District and the Select Energy Development Company, Greg?
Sure, so um, this evening I'm requesting the school committee approve um. Authorizing me to sign the power purchasing agreement between Northborough and Southboro Regional District and Select. Um, as was presented um at a prior meeting, uh Select presented a canopy project. And um, this would basically start the work um to secure. Funding and and move the project forward on select be uh on our behalf by select. Um, the con- the agreement has been reviewed by legal counsel. Um, and my recommendation is for the school committee to authorize me to um, sign the contract. Uh, with Select.
And so we need a vote?
Correct.
And does anybody have any questions?
So like, so is this, the potential savings associated with this, is this what was presented at the? At the combined school committee meeting?
Correct. It's just the canopy portion of this.
Wasn't the roof portion as well? What what happened to that part?
Um, I think the roof portion it uh requires um, some work to be completed on our roof repairs. That is part of um, we're waiting to hear more about the governor's uh set aside money for. Projects and roof repair, the combination of those two, so we we don't have any information on that yet. But it is, you know, we're ready once that information comes forward. So the canopy project is the project that we know. Um, is ready to move forward.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there time sensitivity to us to giving you the approval today? As opposed to the next meeting? I and I ask that because when I was, what I think I asked for in that meeting, what is hopeful to see? If we proceed with this project, and I think you provided a good background as to why we would use select versus maybe. Buying solar equipment on our own and and all those answers were good and I'm supportive of the project, but what I was hoping to see was something that would say. If we do this between what we have on the roof, what we have now with the canopy. X dollars of our, X percentage of our total uh electricity spend. We now view as potentially fixed for whatever period, and then this is how much we're subject to variability. Um, and I knew all the cost savings were somewhat um, you know, guaranteed, they're projections, but I still think. Given the other discussions we were having around the budget, to the extent that we can fix a portion of an otherwise variable cost feels like the right. Maneuver, and I just wanted to know how much of a percentage of our total utility cost would be now fixed as a result of this.
And we we can provide that data, um, Matt, so I don't have that ready for this evening. Um, we do have uh Dave Bissin from Select in the audience, if if we would want to hear from him. Um, that's, we could promote him to as an audi- as a presenter and answer any, he could answer any questions as well. About the time sensitivity, I think that the, you know, we're trying to move this project forward, so I think there's. The the power purchasing agreement allows Select to begin its work um and. Procuring this and and getting the funding to support this project. I'd be happy to have Dave speak on behalf of Select if that's the will of the committee.
I, so I don't need to hear from him unless others do. I mean, if you don't have the the piece of, so the percentage of fixed versus variable now that. That's fine, I guess maybe a question, does this vote require to be unanimous? In order to get it approved so you can sign it?
Say that again, Matt, I did not hear you.
In order for this to move forward, do you need a unanimous vote tonight?
Uh, no, this is not, no.
Okay.
I mean, the, we are in control of this project, so I, you know, I think.
Yeah, I say that without it being an obstacle, but I I think in the absence of seeing. What I had asked for, I I my preference would be to vote personally no, but. I'm still, I mean, I generally am supportive of the the project, so.
I think we can, we could wait till next month. You know, there's, there is, although there is a time sensitivity, I mean, it's preferred to have it signed in this month. Um, we're in control of of this contract and. We don't have to sign it tonight, you don't have to approve it tonight, we could bring it back in February.
And just so you know, Greg, Dave um i- is available uh to uh answer some, uh maybe not completely. A Matt's question, but certainly a a large portion of that, um, he would be able to share if the community was willing.
Do we want to just get Dave in to see if he can answer this question?
Goodbye, me. And also, Paul, Paul has his hand up and I'm.
Yeah, Paul, do you have a related question?
Uh, different question, but I'm just wondering if we've had discussions with the town of Northborough, uh, whether. Residents have any idea this is going on? I mean, when all of a sudden canopies go up in the parking lot, it's kind of a big deal.
So this would be the only the canopy it at the Algonquin parking lot and no other canopies in. Southborough or Northborough, those are separate agreements. Uh, we've not had any conversations with neighbors, I think it's um, Algonquin's a bit landlocked, so it's not as if. Um, it's obstructing a view of a neighbor. Um, so there's, I think. Less worry about the neighbors uh in this project at Algonquin. But a very much of a concern at o- other schools in Northborough and Southborough. So I did promote David, uh, Dave Bissin, so he is available to. Maybe provide any insight and also talk about the timeline, so um, if we do not execute the contract this evening, what a, you know. What's the impact, I I guess is the the important question.
That's right.
Dave just left.
Yes. Greg, did you kick him off, Greg?
No.
Look.
If Dave does come back, I'd like to ask the question at my, one of my uh offices, parking lots, they have a canopy. And this, the snowstorm was the rain, it froze. And they didn't do the canopy right, and then there was icicles that came down between the canopies. And they fell on the cars and broke them all, so hopefully Dave won't do that.
So Dave, two questions on the table, um. Design, overall design and and then again, impact of of waiting one month to execute. The um, agreement.
Great, um, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I was switched to my laptop, um, from my phone. Yeah, so in terms of the the timeline, um. Yeah, i- it would be our, our recommendation, our strong preference to get the authorization, uh, the superintendent to sign it. Uh, tonight, um, we have a fairly lengthy process before we will ever. Do anything on the ground, so to speak, or in the dirt, uh, with a canopy. Um, there is an, a large amount of engineering work that costs tens of thousands of dollars in geotechnical studies in environmental. Uh, studies and permitting uh with various, you know, town in Northborough. Um, groups, agencies of the government. And that all can take, you know, up to six months, so we, we really want to get the ball rolling on that, we can't do that type of work that costs. You know, that kind of money um without being under a contract. Um. The other factor is uh with interconnection uh with national grid. This project, uh, we have applied for interconnection several months ago, it is. Considered a fairly large project by the utility, um, particularly when combined with what's already on the roof. Um, and so it is basically subjected to a little bit more um, due diligence on their end, which is why it's taking a little bit longer, but. Um, I'd say in a matter of less than the time between today and next meeting. We could have an interconnection services agreement presented to us to select as the, as a system owner. Um, and they do not give us very long to uh sign it, it's typically fifteen business days. Um, and if we were presented with uh. Sometimes there are significant uh fees associated with signing it um to enter into something called an impact study, we don't know if that's really going to happen or not. But again, these are all costs that we could bear um and are already budgeted into sort of the, you know, the the. The pro forma that we've, you know, developed to create the power purchase agreement rate. Uh, but we can't, you know, pay for instance, a, you know, a twenty thousand dollar impact study fee. Um, in fifteen business days if we don't have a contract, so. Uh, that is, that is, and if, you know, the consequence of not paying on time and losing interconnection means essentially going to the back of a line. Um, in which other projects in your area that we're not aware of who they are. Um, could seize the available hosting capacity. Um, it is not unlimited, it is actually quite finite in terms of how many more projects can connect to that feeder line to the grid. So there's, there is a high degree of of time sensitivity um on interconnection. In addition to the engineering and everything that needs to happen before we can actually drill into the ground and put foundations in.
So Dave, I don't know if you're the person to answer this question, but um, and I don't know if you heard Matt's question, so Matt, do you want to just uh? Ask your question again?
So the the question I have, I would like to understand, we have a current utility bill that's in our budget. And by doing this project, there is no capital outlay to the region. However, we're signing up for a power contract for extended period of time where we're gonna. Buy the power back and pay it at fixed rate, so I'd like to know what percentage of our utility use is now going to be at a fixed cost. For the duration of this contract.
Okay, um, I can give a indication uh and then explain why I can't like, you know, necessarily give an exact figure, so. Um, this, this additional canopy project, you know, I'm looking at the summary. That I presented at the combined uh school committee meeting in twenty, late twenty twenty three, I think it was in November. Um. And the Algonquin canopy project, um, in terms of, you know, I put together a number. It is expected to offset ninety three percent of the remaining usage on. You have two meters at Algonquin High School, so ninety three percent of the remaining annual usage at the meter. That is uh current, that currently has the rooftop solar system connected to it, so. Um. You know, the math on that is, you know, when we, when we say offsetting ninety three percent of the usage, um, it's. In directional terms, you're going to offset um. Slightly less than ninety three percent of the total remaining cost on that meter. Because uh some of your costs on that meter continue to be demand charges. Um, and I don't know, I think if you were there, Matt, at the last meeting, just uh. The quick explanation of what a demand charge is, it's not a charge that you pay at your house. Um, it's on larger commercial meters like this one at Algonquin, it relates to uh the maximum power consumption. It's a rate of consumption that you hit uh during a fifteen minute interval of each billing month. So it's basically when, you know, in in picture a hot day in May, it's when uh the the air conditioning is. You know, using its maximum power, the lights are on, et cetera, et cetera, there's maximum loads, and you're assessed. A substantial amount of your bill is based on that maximum that you hit during the month. Solar is not presumed, it may in fact reduce that demand at some point, you know, if it's very sunny and there's lots of solar being produced at that point. It would, it would lessen that demand relative to if you didn't have the solar system, but we can't guarantee that because it could be cloudy. It could be after dark in the winter, et cetera, so we just leave it out of the calculation. So all I'm saying is. Even if we're offsetting ninety three percent of your kilowatt hours left on that meter. Or approximately, you know, that, it's going to offset a little bit less than than that in terms of dollars left on that meter. Um. That's, so anyway, there's, there's, there's quite a number of calculations that you'd have to do to actually come up with what's, what of the remaining is fixed, but. Um, suffice to say that a large chunk of that, I would venture to say at least eighty five percent. It's just a gasp, eighty, eighty five percent of that remaining meters cost might be offset. Um, in terms of the offset, what I mean, you know, and solar energy coming from that, but yeah, you're fixing, you're you're fixing that cost for twenty five years under the PPA. Um, does that give you a good idea of just the orders, you know, of magnitude we're talking about, um, or, you know? I'm looking at, um.
Yeah, I mean, everything you said was suggesting eighty five percent to ninety percent fixed, but then you're still saying this, this.
There's a second meter too. Yeah, so we 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 had proposed a rooftop system, which um. We're not explicitly looking for authorization for that tonight because it's not our priority, because we don't know when the roof can be replaced, et cetera. Um, that rooftop system, yeah.
You get, to get to the core of what I'm asking, we just spent, I don't know if you've been participating in the entire meeting or you just joined towards the park. More recently, but we talked about our budget and we talked about a a budget increase for the region of, you know, nearing five percent. And there's a lot of reasons that contribute to that, and what I'm, I guess what I'm hopefully here for a project, and again, maybe the the risk to this. To the committee members is low because we're not putting out any additional capital, we're just signing up to buy. A fair amount of power at a fixed price, that should suggest that. We could lose if the cost of power went down, which is fine because that's, you know, part of signing up to a fixed price contract, and I think generally people think. Costs will go up, so it's probably feels like a good deal. But from a, from a um, commit, from a committee that's responsible for an annual budget, I feel like. It feels like a good thing to be stepping into something that we have now a known cost for extended period of time and we. When we talk about budget increases in future years, we shouldn't be talking about electricity because we've decided as a committee to fix a good portion of it. And that's what I'm trying to get to is, are we effectively turning something into a fixed price for an extended period of time, which actually should be a good thing for us because. We don't have, we've taken away some budget risk for increase in the future.
I would, I would absolutely agree with that, it's an incredibly strong hedge against, uh, you know, you have. It's hard to know how fast rates will go up, I can, we can tell you hundreds of billions of dollars are going to be invested in the electric grid over the next, you know, five to ten years. And those will show up in rates uh one way or another, so I think, you know, you, you know, fixing it for twenty five years, we we think it could. This canopy is going to save about a million, you know, twenty six thousand dollars over twenty five years for the district, so. Um, could be. Um, could be, you know, even more than that if rates rise faster than we projected.
Greg?
So just a comment too, on the purpose of the. Array on the roof at Algonquin was a proof of concept. So we did lock in a fixed energy cost and. To date, since the, the launch of that array. The volatility in the energy market, so the fixed rate that we had on the energy costs from the solar compared to what we were then paying. Uh, and energy costs as, as, you know, the rates rose significantly over the past couple of years. Would increase the value of that solar array. So I think, I think it proved the next couple of years that that was a good investment. We had a known cost of electricity. The energy market was volatile. If you compare the two bills, the solar bill compared to. Non-solar energy, there's a, quite a difference in, in, in the rate.
Okay, so, um. All I know is that I have been listening to a solar discussion over the course of three superintendents. And, um. I don't get a feeling from Dave that we can really get your answer, your, uh, answer to your question, Matt, like a specific. Percentage or a specific dollar amount. So the superintendent has asked us to vote on this and, um, I'm going to say let's vote on it. And if it fails, it fails, and then we can bring it back next month, but. Uh, are we ready to take a vote?
Kathy, can I, Catherine, can I ask Dave one question? So. And what if we don't vote it tonight and we vote in February? What? What's, I know you want to get started now. Uh, there's, there's the select company, but what's? You know, I mean, we waited quite a long time to get that, the agreement. The last time we put an array on the roof at Algonquin, we waited almost eight months before the interconnection agreements. And so. I want to make sure that committee has the answers to its questions because this is not a, this is not a five-year commitment. This is a twenty-five year commitment. So we're talking about a month to make sure that the committee feels comfortable answering. You know, signing a contract that's gonna, um. Commit twenty-five years. So what is a month? Like? Like what's?
Yeah.
It's a month later, you can start basically getting your work done.
Yeah, I mean, if we were talking about another rooftop project, um. You know, those don't take as long to, for us to get those going, right? I mean, it's basically a structural assessment of the building, which you've already had done. We don't really see any risk there, but with a canopy, it's, it's just a much bigger, uh, construction project. So it, and it has nuance in terms of, you know, what's under the ground. Which we know a lot about already, but.
But I, I know, get all that, David, David, but. Are we talking about, you know, we have, you know, instead of. Let's say it takes eight months to get this up and running and built. Are we talking about eight months from today? Or if we wait until February, you know, the February meeting, it's eight months till, till February, which is. Again, a month over a twenty-five year period is not that much time. So. If the committee is signing something that it doesn't feel has its, all its answers to, I'm, I don't, I don't know if I'm comfortable. I, we need a solid. Matt, to your question, I feel like we need to have every committee member support. And feel comfortable signing an agreement for twenty-five years.
Um, yeah, I think the more time sensitive thing, uh, if I could just circle back, I, I said, in, interconnection. Um, we have been waiting for the interconnection for, for quite a while. We've had several, our regulatory team has, you know, worked diligently on it, back and forth with National Grid. Um, we are expecting it, um. It, it was, you know, expected to be already by, by about a week and a half, but. It could come at any time. And then like I said, they, you know, National Grid does not, um. You know, extend these things. Uh, they have a, they have a, you know, under DPU, they're regulated by DPU. We get fifteen business days and like, uh, you know, if we have a twenty thousand dollar impact study cost, we, um. We're gonna not be able to pay that if we're not under contract. So if that happens, be, you know, if, if, if this happens soon and then we don't have a vote to authorize, um. If you can't sign the contract until March. Uh, we could fall out of the interconnection queue, which is, um.
So can I recommend a strategy to the committee? So we can have a special open meeting at any point in time. Um, to vote this. So as soon as you know. Uh, Dave, you have your, like, agreement that we, the, you know, interconnection agreement. We could, the committee can convene virtually in, in a special open meeting and vote. That would provide me with some time to make sure that we're getting all the committee's questions answered as best we can.
Okay. And the specific question that still needs to be answered, it's Matt, if I could, you know. So I think what needs to be done, and, and I'm not really sure this. Has a huge impact, um. In terms of how you're looking at it, but you're looking for. What percentage of, could you phrase the question exactly? Cause I'm not sure it's one that, it, it would have to be answered on a specific billing month. And it would have to be answered with two utility bills, one for each meter and. A number of other definitions that you would need to provide because I don't. I don't quite understand what number you're looking, uh, exactly for. I was trying to interpret it before, but if you could let me know, um. In your own words, that'd be helpful.
So, and, and maybe I can provide another opportunity just to, to yourself. Greg and Keith or anyone else, just to confirm what I, what I think I understand. There is no capital outlay to the region.
Correct.
You're, you're buying the equipment, you're putting it there, and then we're agreeing to purchase power from you for twenty-five years. And. The price that we're gonna pay is to essentially today's market price for electricity and it's now fixed for twenty-five years. For, and I'm, what I was trying to figure out is how much of our energy costs are we effectively now? Fixing, because I, I view it as a positive thing. As I, as I said around our budget, we're looking at a budget that has a potential increase of close to five percent. And over time, we'll probably be, if, to anyone that's on this committee for, for more than. Three years, six years, or any length of time in the future, we'll probably be talking about increased budgets for the future. And so to take out a cost and now make it fixed for twenty-five years means we, we should not have budget increases relating to that line item. And I was just trying to figure out if there's a way to convey to the committee, how much of that line item is now fixed? And it really doesn't change the economics of the transaction in front of us because you're saying you're going to save a million dollars projected over the, the course of twenty-five years, which I said back at the combined meeting, I think is, is a big number when you hear someone say a million dollars. But for a twenty-five year agreement, doesn't feel like it's all that much in, in, in my mind. Maybe I have a, a different sense of materiality. But for me to get comfortable approving a twenty-five year deal, I just, I feel like I have to be comfortable that. We're actually fixing a cost. It means that for some period of time, I'm not going to see a budget increase.
You're fixing, you're fixing our cost per kilowatt hour. That's what you, that's the only thing we can contractually guarantee is that when. The project is built, you're, you're going to pay a certain price per kilowatt hour for every kilowatt hour produced by that system over twenty-five years. Well, we can't. I can't actually answer the question because it's a moving target of. What amount of your, your energy budget you're going to fix because it changes every month. So National Grid can give you a totally different number next month for the supply portion. They can change it. At, uh, any, anytime they want in the supply. Portion, I'm sorry, the distribution and transmission portion. Your competitive supply, you're locking generally for three year, year terms and we, you know. That's a, that's a competitive supply contract that's different. Um, the demand charge, same thing, you know, they can put in for an increase with DPU and change that. Portion and we don't, we're not presuming to fix that. That's what I was explaining before is that we're. Estimating the savings that you can get on. Um, you're avoiding buying kilowatt hours from the utility and we're selling them to you at less. Uh, we're not presuming that we're going to reduce your demand charges, although we could. So I, I can't.
Maybe the question that I'm asking is, so for the cost that we're fixing, how much of a percentage of our current cost does that actually represent? Like we are fixing a portion of the cost.
I, I think the, 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 the way to do it is put it in kilowatt hours. What is our kilowatt hours usage over, say, the last year? And what percentage of those kilowatt hours is your proposal going to cover? Is that about right, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess it does feel right. Um, and we can put it to vote for others. I mean, I just. To Greg's point, we're signing a twenty-five year deal and, and I saw our number at a combined meeting. A couple of months ago, and yes, it, it presents the savings, but I, I, I guess I was expecting to see it presented to me in a different fashion that showed. Here's the impact to your budget. To the regional school committee. This is what I expect to see. I understand things won't play out the way that they get presented because it's all estimates. But I thought there was, I, I thought it'd be an opportunity to put something in a little bit of context as to what. What this would do to our regional budget, other than saying it's gonna, we expect it's going to be a million dollar savings. Okay. Yeah. Sounds great. I, I should sign off on that. I'm just not sure I understand it properly.
Here's another way to say, in terms of the, just, I. Yeah, it's, there are calculations that I can't do on the fly while, you know, presenting, um, but they're, you know, I said directionally. Ninety-three percent of the remaining usage on that meter, um, would be covered by this system. So. That's, that's the number that I've got right now in front of me. Um. You know, the other thing to consider is, you know, if we could get this rolling soon, uh, we might be able to build it this summer. Uh, if we can't, I, you know, there's, hopefully we could still do it in the fall. Um. I just know it might not be the most convenient for us or for the school in terms of, you know, you know, football and, and things going on over there. Um, so there are, there are considerations in terms of, of delaying, but. If it's, yeah, if it needs to be, um, a special meeting. Yeah, we, we would like to go in as soon as we can, but I guess we'd have to leave it there.
So I just heard ninety-three percent. So ninety-three percent on one meter and is the other meter. Covered by the rooftop insulation that's already there?
No, the, the other, the second meter is totally uncovered at this point. It's all grid electricity.
Okay.
We would, we would, if we did a roof, a second rooftop system, we would, we would connect to that second untouched meter. But that's not, uh. What's immediately in front of us tonight.
Um, I mean. Greg, I understand you want, I, I appreciate the desire to have a unanimous decision. Um, we don't have all the representatives of the school committee here anyways. We can't have a fully unanimous vote anyway. Um, I mean, just. Should we, I mean, would it be worthwhile to at least have an exploratory vote? I mean, if it passed on the merits of, of, of a majority, then. I think it, that that's an appropriate vote, then we can, we can move forward. Um. And I'm happy to vote last and, and, you know, so others can provide their point of view. I've, I've occupied a fair amount of time and I apologize for that, but I'm just. Just trying to get myself comfortable with it. Right? I open it to others if they want to do a vote. Man, they generally, people know where I'm gonna, where I'm gonna vote today, but I, but I, but I will say that in saying that, I fully support the direction that we're going in.
Can we, can, Greg, is it possible for you to send out, can you find more information out for Matt? Send it to us. Can we not do this over an email? Can we not vote something? Do we have to get back together to vote this or can we not do something?
Uh, we would need to reconvene in an open session to vote.
I mean, so as long as it's not a four hour meeting, again, it's like a five minute thing. Can we get, can you get the information out and we just? I don't know, next week or something for five minutes or fifteen minutes, whatever it is.
Yeah, what my recommendation is, let me work with Dave. I need to look at, um, I want to look at the current solar array on the roof. I want to do some financial analysis on what. What are we saving in electricity costs that we normally would have to build into our budget? As a result of having that solar. So what are we saving on an annual basis for the cer- solar array? And then work with Matt on getting a calculation and what would we be saving annually as a result of the canopy? That, that would be, you know, we could then use that savings to accomplish other goals, um, that this school committee has. Um, so Matt, to your point, if we can fix electricity costs over the next fifteen years, that means there's. You know, thirty thousand dollars annually, I'm just, that we can put towards other goals that the school committee has.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to, um. Postpone this until either next month or if we need to reconvene, we will see if we can do that. So let us move on to the principal's report. Is the principal still there?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, everyone. Um, Greg, if you give me, uh, screen sharing, I can jump in. All right. Still says I need, uh, your permission, Greg. Okay. All right, here we go. So I think everyone can see I'm a little out of practice of, uh, Zoom presenting. Uh, can everyone see my screen here? Okay. So, uh, I know we've been going a little bit long, so, but, um, uh, we're going to have Cass, uh, present first here. So welcome to the principal's report and we're going to start with, uh, the. Cass's, uh, report and Cass, if it's okay with you, I'll advance your slides and if you just give me that, the heads up to do so, okay?
Yeah, sure. Sounds good. Okay. So, uh, since we last met, we've had the school's winter break. And then since I've started to settle back in since. Um, midterms are seen by some students as a major stressor in the year and others see it as a grade booster. So. Um, last week was a series of half days where students participated in. Two, two-hour exams per day. Um, except for some seniors who, if they took a one semester class and had an A range in it, were exempt from taking the final. Um, for honor societies, we've had two major developments. The National Social Studies History Honor Society has started and they have recently brought in. Uh, finalized the applications and accepted all of these students that. Made it in and their inductions are set for next month. In addition, the Spanish Honor Society has, um, held a few events recently, including one right before the midterm for Spanish speaking students to. Practice their speaking and, um, writing, particularly for those portions of the exam, which are major stressors for those students. Um, in addition, they are working to plan a museum of fine arts trip with the ELD department and. Um, also a, with level five and AP students to go to a dance studio. Ritmos for information and lessons about traditional Spanish dances from Spanish speaking countries. Um, the ADL group, a world of difference, anti defamation league is beginning their second workshop on. Um, fighting hate for good and working against bias and bullying. Harbinger, as presented before, was a crown finalist this year, and they have also released two recent harbinger surveys. Surveying the student body on a variety of issues about upcoming coverage for this next semester. And the school play was chosen as a murder is announced. And, um, the cast was selected and rehearsals have begun and some seem very excited about it. Um, next, the social media and sports marketing. Classes took a trip to Gillette Stadium to learn more about those kinds of fields and meet with some professionals. There was also a lot of buzz when the North Borough Chief of Police was announced to be an Algonquin former alumni. And in addition, uh, Officer Sullivan has this past week led an Alice training for students after school. To learn more about safety at Algonquin. The CONCON twenty-four is highly anticipated for Unity Beyond Differences and. ADL students and it stands for the Connections Conference and it will be held this spring. Um, with a variety of students from around the New England area attending. And both those groups are currently collaborating to work on presenting information there and, um, joining some of certain workshops. The robotics team, particularly robotics first, has gotten their. Major task for this season announced, which is creating a robot which can throw frisbees into a machine. And then students will also have to. Um, students will also be able to participate themselves as part of the team, um, competing in a ring toss, which will go to spill all the points from that, go to support it. So. Um, it's a lot of robotics kids doing some athletic training currently, which is fun to see in the weight rooms. Um, the, there have been two decades. Um, the, there have been two DECA events this past month, including a mock role play where all students were allowed and then. A competition where a hundred ninety-four students. Uh, went to compete at districts and eighty qualified for states, which means they all placed top seven or higher in their respective categories. And an extra four kids are going to compete on a DECA quiz bowl team, so that's eighty-four total students. That are heading to states for DECA, which is wonderful. Next, the Career Resource Direction has been taking steps as. Um, she has been able to meet with a variety of students, including. Those that are recommended from guidance and those who volunteered from their own merit. On in order to collect student work experiences and major concerns in order to finalize some goals for the future. And finding local opportunities, um, especially with groups that students have worked with in the past. Or to build on current practices.
So thank, uh, Cass, so, uh, just to be clear, uh, what you're referring to is the career exploration innovation leader, Michelle Kalin. Did a, uh, like a student focus group to identify. You know, what students' interests are and how she can, uh, build some of her work and, and her goals around. The things that students are really interested in, right? Is that accurate?
Yes, thank you. Um, next, for the schedule overall for next year, um, as we hit the. Uh, end of the first semester, we, as a group, um, the student advisor committee went out and talked to a bunch of students, different classes. About their feelings on this year's schedule compared to last year's and overall this year's is primarily seen as better. With the. The, the removal of double blocks and removal of Titan Days, but overall, a lot of students liked the. Order from last year better because when you drop a class now, you wait a full day and then you don't see it until the end of the following. Day after the missed day, so, um, there's a little bit more of a gap with there. I think some teachers also agree with that. Um, in general, from student government, there's a lot of finalization of the post winter ball finances. And a lot of that money that was raised from different groups of the semester went to. Um, organizing some things for this next semester. And in addition, there are some post midterm restaurant fundraisers at Hot Table and Panera and. Uh, Chipotle and Atlantic Poke for students to attend after the exams. Um, there was a CAP student position that was voted into student government where now a student from the CAP program will be. Elected to the student government and be able to participate. Um, in those discussions, since the student government is currently in student council, only freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors, and it does not include the CAP students. Um, there will be a voter registration drive this next month. Um, in anticipation for the vote in, on March fifth. In local elections for the primaries and then. Planning has begun for Putting for Patients, which is the, one of the major fundraisers. Uh, that goes to research for the Jimmy Fund and students have participated in it. This is the second year. Back since the end of COVID, um, that Algonquin students will be running this and beginning of carnival preparations have started. And for AI, uh, there is a new working group that's been formed. Including Mr. Kalan, the technology interns and some interested students and teachers. The group in total has about ten people currently and the major goals are to review the student handbook policies, collaborate to develop best practices. Um, including with assisting student groups, including tutors like for the Writing Center and for National Honor Society and other writing groups and. With this work, there is a student survey planned for. The results to come out before next month's meeting in order to help inform the March professional development instruction. And overall, the goals of our student advisory committee are currently to. Um, review the status of the advisory policies when those are ready. Uh, to connect with the Trotter and Melk and student governments before the next combined school committee meeting to ensure that we have better connection across the district. To, um, reduce the stress before all exam weeks. We did some stuff before the midterms and are hoping to do more. For the finals and overall, we're seeing a lot less wifi complaints, as was mentioned earlier, which is awesome. So thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Cass. Well done. Does anyone have any questions for Cass?
Thank you. Yes, I have one question. Um, I'm glad to see the, the school play is progressing and you have that. I went to place, what is the date of the school play, um, a murder is announced?
You know, I don't know that, but I can certainly find that pretty quickly, um, and probably by the end of the meeting, I can put it into the chat.
Okay, and Cass, thank you so much. You, every month you, you do such a great review and keep us updated. I feel like I'm almost. Uh, a student or a faculty member there, so thank you very much, very informative. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much indeed, Cass. Um, you've really grown in this role. You bring a lot of maturity and some gravitas. To your presentations, you take this seriously and, and I do appreciate it. And I especially appreciate the nods to stress and kind of a bottom up look at the stress surrounding. Exams and looking to break it, looking to prevent it, looking to, um, attenuate it. Um, I just really respected that, that you've woven that theme into your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no other hands. I'm gonna, um, continue on to my portion of the principal's report. So, um, I'm just gonna focus on one big bucket. Uh, we have, uh, many goals as we start every year and I've. Uh, overviewed them in our, uh, our school improvement plan. Um, we've, uh, tackled and achieved many of, of our smaller goals. But the three biggest areas that we're focusing on, the ones that impact the most kids and the most adults, um, are. Three enormous areas that you probably, we've talked quite a bit about. One is the, um, the start and completion of the athletic complex. And we're not at full completion there, but we're very close. Um, the other is to address, uh, student attendance patterns, which is. Uh, a statewide and countrywide and global concern, um, coming out of the, still coming out of the pandemic. And we've done a lot of work around that and I've talked a lot about that in this meeting in, uh, with this group and I don't need to do that again today. Um, the third, we, um, is one we're really focusing very closely on in the next month. And so I thought I would take a little bit of time here to share with you. Last year in the spring, when I started it, when we were in the development of our school improvement plan, I asked the staff to identify one instructional goals area. Uh, that they wanted to work on at all together, so, um, I think that was the first time we've done that in my time here at Algonquin where I asked the staff, what do you wanna work on? Um, and, and how can I help assist you in that? And what they agreed upon was that students, um. Just attitudes and how students come at their, their work has seems, has shifted a little bit and I think some of that. I, I think there's a lot of different reasons for that, um. But that keeping, getting students engaged and keeping them engaged, I think is, is becoming increasingly difficult and I think part of that is coming out of the pandemic. Um, that, uh, teachers are reporting that that's a bit of a shift and. Students reliance on technology during the pandemic and just the advances in technology that have happened just routinely. Make, uh, uh, create a bit of a barrier to engagement for our students. And make it a little bit more and more challenging year to year for our teachers to keep students fully engaged for the duration of a whole period, so. Um, that's something that staff wanted to look at and to identify what are the barriers to students' engagement? And how can we adjust instruction to fully engage students, keep them excited and not, uh, you know, not rely on, um. On really transactional measures of, uh, of, uh, extrinsic rewards for students to just. Do the things that they need to do to, to become, um, to develop the mastery of the content and skills that they need. So, um, that is, uh, is something we worked on in the spring. We identified in the fall. Um, the common language about what we mean about student engagement, you would think there would just be one, you know, one way to define student engagement, but it is a little bit more nuanced than that. And I won't get too deeply into that. Um, but we, as a staff, agreed on language that we can all agree on when we're saying the word student engagement, what that truly means. Um, and then we identified what's called a problem of practice around that, uh, that thing that they identified in the spring, which was. Students are having a hard time, uh, getting engaged and staying engaged. In two weeks, we will have Harvard's Graduate School of Education. We are partnering with them through a wonderful program that Stephanie Reinhorn has. Linked us up with, um. Where our staff, myself included, will be, um, five of our staff members will be. Trained in instructional rounds and instructional rounds is a, a process where, where, um. Where people, where educators are trained in making, um. Uh, low inference, uh, really objective observations about what they see in a classroom. And then they come together and through some protocols, identify, uh, patterns and trends that can inform. Um, what, uh, the school leaders and, and others might, um, might consider to make changes, so. Um, that's something that we're excited for. Uh, I'll be trained, uh, on February fifth. Many of my staff have already been trained in previous iterations of instructional rounds that you may or may not have heard of, I, I heard from. It was preceded my time. And then on February eighth, twenty, roughly twenty, um, trained educators from around the. Country who have participated in the Harvard program, we're gonna join us at Algonquin to rotate through the building, visit classrooms, make some. Some observations about what they're seeing, about our students' behaviors, about our students' work completion, about the instructions our teachers give, all the. Things that happen in a, in a classroom and then they're gonna work with me and my, my department head team to make decisions about or to, to just. Hear what an outside observation about what our student engagement patterns and trends look like, so. This is our big first effort to, to just, um, really, uh, drill down on this issue of student engagement. Gather information and see what, um, you know, what are the barriers to getting kids excited about their learning, um, and, and how can we improve it? Um, I will say, we, we have certainly very, very many wonderful, uh, teachers and our, our students come. To work hard every day, uh, we're just looking how to like refine that even further and make, uh, learn that we're learning more enjoyable perhaps. So that's a big topic on our minds at the high school in the last few weeks, um, and that will dominate many of our conversations as a staff in the next. Four to six to eight weeks and then what we're probably gonna incorporate, probably a, a next step into our school improvement plan for next year. That reflects, um, some of the conclusions of this group. Um, so of the three big buckets, I'm, I'm counting the athletic complex pretty close to completion. The, um, student attendance portion is something that has progressed steadily and, um, we're about halfway there, I would say on, on. Uh, completing that as a goal and this is, uh, we're about halfway there on this goal. Uh, I just have not talked about it all that much. And so, um, that is my report to you today. Uh, does anyone have any questions on some of the things I've shared? It looks like there's something in the, okay. Kathleen.
Thanks again. Um, I'm really interested in the, following the. Um, engagement issues, the attentive circuitry that, that students have, that, that are willing to have. Um, and, and I would very much like for this to continue to be reported. Um, in any opportunity I have to be involved, um. If there's any, um, involvement of a school committee member, um, this is certainly something I'm seeing at the collegiate level. And it's, it's really rather disturbing because their capacity for attending alone. Um, it seems to be the main issue, memory and reasoning and executive function are all based on that, so it. It has been alarming. It is the buzz across the way and I certainly would like to see in what direction you're taking this. Thank you.
I'm happy to report back out with what we find out. I'm, I'm excited myself.
All right, thank you, Sean. It's Joan.
Sean, uh, Cass just, uh, posted on the chat line that the play is gonna be March fourteenth and the fifteenth. And I was wondering if we could, uh, as a reminder, is if we could, uh, maybe have for the dress rehearsal. Reach out to the North Borough, North Borough citizens and also the South Borough, um, senior citizens. And maybe open up if it's possible, uh, to come to a dress rehearsal.
I will look into that. I, I know that didn't work out the, in the fall, but I will see if we can make it work this time. I think that would be wonderful. I would love to see that happen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions?
Just have one comment and that is, um, you know, Dr. Reinhorn's work, you know, we recruited her from Harvard. She ran the institute for many years and that's how we made the connection, so. We have an instructional rounds, truly a, uh, expert on our team who's kind of. Made that connection back to instructional rounds, both at one of our middle schools and the high school, so just appreciate, you know, uh, Stephanie. Utilizing our connections and expertise to better our district, so thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, we're very lucky.
Yeah, thank you for reminding us about that.
Thank you.
And we hope she doesn't go back, so we're, we're trying to be, be nice to her. We had a lot of compliments her way. So in your packet, in your packet is also the enrollment report as of. Um, twelve fifteen, so no significant variances. Um, also in your packet are, uh, two financial reports that Becky will review, the. Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report and the Statement of Revenue.
So it's hard to believe that the, um, monthly general fund report that's included in your packet is as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And that marks the halfway point of, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, so, um, we're, uh, we're more than halfway, um, to the finish line in this fiscal year. Um, as of that date, we did have six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars remaining on the bottom line or two point one three percent. Um, we really are right in line with, um, where we were in the previous year. And it only marks the difference of about thirty-five thousand dollars from the previous month's, um, monthly general fund report. Um, there's really nothing, um, of concern that I wanna point out to the committee. We have been re, uh, reviewing all of our open purchase orders and working with, um, the departments and with the high school, um, leadership. On looking at those purchase orders and making adjustments as needed, um, but really I feel that that, that the budget is in a good place at this. Point, um, in terms of, uh, closing out the fiscal year. And the same is true with the athletic revolving account, um, that report is also included and you'll see that we have about thirty-five percent remaining. And again, that's consistent with where we trend, um, at this time, um, during the fiscal year. I think last year we had about thirty percent remaining on the bottom line. So neither one of these reports really, um, has any cause for concern. Um, in terms of the revenue report, um, you will notice that we did receive South Borough's December first. Assessment payment, we had received North Borough's, um, in November. Um, the, uh, one thing that I had pointed out to the committee last month is at the charter school tuition, we had received, um, an abnormally high. Amount of funds. We have reached out to Desi and we are still awaiting a response from them on what the discrepancy is. Um, so we continue to follow up with them on that. Um, we also received reimbursement for, um, some of the, uh. The services that were provided, um, under Medicaid services. Um, and those are for eligible student services and that was about two thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars. And then finally, the athletic receipts that are included in this report are reflective of the winter sports athletic fees. As well as some, um, gate receipts for events. Um, but I would say November was a relatively quiet month, um, in terms of revenue receipts.
Okay, any questions? Do I?
Yeah, there's no, there's no questions or comments. I'll make a motion to accept the expenditure report and revenue reports as presented until audited.
Moved by Matt, seconded by?
Chris, second.
Chris, any more discussion? All right, roll call vote, uh, John?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Stephanie? Oh, sorry. Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Kathleen, me, yes, that is unanimous. Okay, next.
So also in your packet is the FY twenty-five budget priorities and the budget calendar, which we reviewed during the preliminary, revised preliminary budget presentation. And then lastly, um, Keith, we have, uh, a quick update on the athletic complex project.
Yes, uh, very, very quick. Um, like Greg and Sean have both mentioned.
Yes, uh, very, very quick. Um, like Greg and Sean have both mentioned, the ath- the phase one of the athletic complex is about ninety-nine percent complete. We are still working on DW with some final um, outstanding items. And they would include the completion of the amphitheater, uh, the manufacturing and installation of the press box. And the remainder sections of, of the bleachers and some site work that needs to be done. Uh, we are expecting an update from DW with solid dates within a few days. Um, so I hope to have a more complete update for the committee at, at our next meeting with hopefully some of these um, items uh, checked off our list. The second thing I wanna mention to the committee is phase two, uh, is working on the amenities building renovations. Uh, we are working with our architect RGB on the bid documents. Um, and we are in the middle of that process now. Um, and we are still hoping for a spring twenty twenty-four completion of that work. Um, so that the amenities building will be um, fully renovated and ADA uh, compliant as we had proposed. So once that gets going, I'll certainly provide the committee with updates uh, as that second phase unfolds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Keith? Hmm, I don't see any. Okay, then we are on to old business FY twenty-five capital plan warrant article approval.
Sure, so two, two means to um, get the um, funding approved for the capital plan. Um, so the total is three hundred ninety-one thousand. As I mentioned during the revised budget um, preliminary budget presentation. Um, we're recommending add it to our overall um, budget assessment. Um, that means when the school uh, budget is voted at each of the town meetings, the capital projects would be approved. In the approval of the overall budget. Um, I think that's a better strategy than having separate warrant articles. Um, separate warrant articles, we run the risk of uh, it not passing in one of the tech communities and therefore it wouldn't pass. So I think my, at this point, my recommendation is to move, to move forward as it being a part of our budget, as a capital assessment. Um, and, and we'll weave it into the overall budget presentation to the towns.
Okay, do we need to vote on this or anything?
No, I just wanna make, uh, yeah, we could vote a direction if people, we could vote that. I mean, it would be helpful to have a vote if, if um, to move and have a part of our overall um, FY twenty-five budget as uh, capital assessment. Becky, do you recommend any language? I mean, it would be voted during the budget, so when we vote, the recommended budget would be part of the, the recommended budget. So I don't think there's a vote that's needed.
Okay, then that's what we'll do. We'll wait until we vote regular budget. All right, policy, there is none. Audience sharing, do we have an audience?
Kathleen, I, I had a quick question on the last item, if I could.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So we, if we put the capital item under our. What did you say, the operational budget?
Yes.
So it's gonna be voted at town meeting, all as one, like it always is, or?
Yeah, like when we present our school committee uh, budget. Um, the regional budget, they'll, they'll be embedded in that, that overall budget, so it's not a separate vote. So someone couldn't question, oh, I, you know, I'm not, I'm gonna, I wanna peel off the capital projects for this budget. It's all incorporated. So for example, instead of the, instead of the um, you know, the four point. A zero percent assessment for South Borough, it'd be the four uh, the four percent added. Um, in the point six four percent for the capital portion of that. So the overall assessment would be four point six four for, for South.
But the capital portion will be broken out and presented as such?
Correct. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, back to our audience. I can't see them.
Uh, no one is um, our sole audience member, Selvi, does not have her hand raised.
Okay, then on to personnel.
Uh, personnel packet is in your um, report and it's as of January seventh, in your packet as of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, uh, communications not at this time, approval of bills and payrolls, we do fine. Agenda items for next month, FY twenty-five recommended budget presentation. We're going back to solar. Anything else? Anybody has a request for? We're not gonna do a um, or are we going to do a uh, department presentation or no because of the budget?
We will look at the schedule. Um, I don't have it in front of me, but we'll, we'll check to, to see if there's a department presentation. Sean, you might know.
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't think there is one. I would guess there's not one, because February, I think we mostly dedicated to budget, but I can let you know.
Okay. All right, then. If nobody has any other suggestions for agenda items? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Moved by Paul, seconded by who?
Karen.
Karen, seconded by Karen. Roll call vote, okay. John?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Can you imagine somebody saying no?
Good point.
And me, Kathleen, that is unanimous. We are adjourned at ten twenty-two.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.